Winchester Planning.
Hold on, I'm gonna have to make.
Are we recording?
Oh, that's right. Thank you. We're not recording.
Recording in progress.
Ah, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July twenty seventh, twenty twenty four Winchester Planning Board Meeting. Uh, we are being recorded both via Zoom and via Windcam. Thank you very much, Windcam. Um, if you do not wish to appear on the recordings, please mute your audio and turn your video off. Um, we do have a quorum this evening. We'll be joined later by one of our members, Echink Scott. So why don't we do a roll call vote, please? Carrie Leighton.
Present.
Uh, Nick Rosettos.
Present.
Sally Dale.
Present.
And I am D. J. I'm present as well. We are joined this evening by our town planner, Taylor Herman. Oh, I know Nancy's in there somewhere. Nancy Polkary, our um, recording secretary, as well as uh, Brian Mantor, our assistant town engineer. Um, and uh, so why don't we uh, move on to, onto our agenda? We uh, have updates and we have to do some meeting minute approvals. Uh, then we have a pre-application for um, a uh, project in the CBD. They're asking for some waivers. The planning board is the special permanent granting authority in the center business district. Um, then we're going to be looking at a couple of um, issues with uh, two of the subdivisions in town, one at Rocky Ledge, one at Lauren Court. We're not going to have any decisions on that. We're actually just gonna talk about whether we're going to have public hearings on that. We have two ZBA petitions to discuss, and then we are going to dive once more into our MBTA three A and North Main Street zoning um, discussions. So um, Taylor, you wanna open it up with any updates and then the rest of the board?
Updates for me, uh, just for some scheduling to sort of one knows, uh, it's gonna be mostly pertaining to MBTA three A North Main. Uh, we will be having a public information session next Thursday, March seventh. Uh, that's gonna be members of the Z-Rack and any other member of the public who wants to join. Um, I'm working on getting the Winchester room booked for that. Uh, we can discuss if we wanna have boards or handouts. But the point, the, the, the purpose is to really inform everyone uh, where we are ahead of our our public hearing the following Thursday. So get some information that we can do for our public hearing the following Thursday.
Are we gonna, we're, we're not gonna have the consultants there, are we?
Uh, Michael will be there. Um, I'm not sure.
I, I, I know we're, we're running up against budgeting issues with them, and I, I wanna make sure they have enough steam left to uh, to do a bang-up job on the design guidelines.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly.
And I'm not sure what, how much value it is to have, to have them there. Um, but um, you know, it, that is just a, just a thought. I just wanna make sure that they have enough time to uh, for instance, evaluate uh, alternative design guidelines.
Okay, that's, that's something we can discuss. Their uh, their time for meeting is uh, separated in their, in their scope from their rest of their time dedicated to uh, to writing, but um, it's something that, that we can, that we can certainly discuss. Um, I think that's the major update for, for me. I guess DM did mention that we are in parallel doing the housing production plan. There's a meeting tonight for that. Um, and I look forward to updating the planning board as that moves forward. I don't think that I'll have a substantial update until mid, mid-March for uh, for the, the status of that.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other updates from the board? Great. If not, why don't we move into approval of minutes? You could bring those up. We have um, our first set of minutes are for Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, are there any comments or corrections?
I have no edits.
Okay, uh, anything from the rest of the board?
Nope.
Okay, so I would welcome a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
I assume.
Is there a second?
If I wasn't the first, I'm the second.
Okay, uh, so roll call though, please. Uh, Nick.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Um, let's move on to our next set of minutes, please.
I think it was just this one.
That's all I see.
Thought too.
Oh, okay. Well, for some reason, okay, great. Makes it faster for some reason. I saw two here. Okay, so let's move on then. Oh, well, we're actually kind of, um, do we have our thirty, thirty-two Church Street people here already?
Everyone who would like to be able to speak or present, can you please raise your hand? I'll give you the opportunity to do so.
Okay, great.
And if one of you, any one of you, just let us know if you'd be ready to uh, to present, or if you'd like us to wait to seven thirty.
You're, you're on mute, I think. There's something going on.
Oh, yeah, Nadia can, you have to double check here.
Hello?
Oh, yeah, we can hear you now.
Yep. Um, just one, I have one quick question to ask Taylor, um, before you guys jump in, maybe get us closer to seven thirty. Taylor, is there a particular focus for the um, the three A public meeting that's gonna be happening next Thursday?
The particular focus is to get, it's really just to get as many people in a room talking about it.
Okay, cuz I know we haven't, we haven't publicly had a, a sort of a design guideline discussion in our, one of our public hearings, so.
Yeah, so, so, so just, just so you, you know how, how this got scheduled. So we were trying to schedule a Z-Rack meeting for design guidelines. And there are a ton of meetings going on. Uh, for example, tonight, there are, we are one of eight town meetings tonight. So there are a lot of things going on, and people are trying to prioritize what they are, what they're going to. So that's gonna be the case through the next few weeks, especially as everyone's reading their warrant articles. Um, so we couldn't get a quorum for the Z-Rack members to, to get together for the design guidelines. So we moved it to the information sessions with the, so we don't need a quorum. And then we can also introduce the guidelines to the rest of the public and talk about it. So I would say, if anything, it's gonna be more of a focus on design guidelines, but we're still gonna present everything that, that, that we have.
Okay, cuz I, I know we had scheduled a public information session that was supposed to happen in the middle of February, and we pushed it back a couple of weeks. So this is it. Okay, so um, have, it, I've used up two minutes. So why don't we switch over to uh, thirty, the thirty-two church? I think five, five minutes early is probably good.
Yeah, can anyone hear me?
Yes, uh, yeah, so if you would, if you would, um, you know, um, identify yourself and tell us what your um, relationship to the project is.
Sure, I'm Nadia Boitnok. I'm part of the Joe the Architect Architectural Team that's been working with Celine and Tom on this project um, over at thirty thirty-two Church Street.
Excellent. And so you're here before us in part or primarily because you are seeking waivers from some of the admission requirements. Is that correct?
Correct waivers, and we're proposing a minor renovation to the um, front facade as well as the rear facade. So those are kind of our main points um, that we're looking for, for approval.
Okay, so we, we um, be changes to the rear and front facades would be part of your official, um, once, once you get into the actual, when you, um, sorry, once you've, once you've submitted your application, then we would go into that. But right tonight, we just, you know, having an understanding of what your project is would be great. But we really wanna focus on getting, our, we're gonna focus our discussion on those waivers so that you can bring us a complete packet.
Understood.
So why don't you just take off?
Okay.
Start off, whatever.
All right. Um, so the, just to run through the requested waivers, then um, it is for the existing conditions plan and site development plan. Building Development Program, basing plan, traffic circulation and parking, um, open space, conservation land, uh, utilities plan, stormwater management and mitigation, landscaping and housing. Um, there's just a very like, um, variable degree of non-applicability to these due to just our site and where it is. Um, and also just the renovations that we're proposing. It is incredibly minor, so and most of it is focused on interior. So that's the driving factor of requesting these.
Okay, so why don't, why don't you just go through your project and, and, and give us an overview of what you're planning and doing then?
Yeah, Nadia, if, if you would like, you have the ability to share your screen if that helps so that.
Oh, my apologies, my apologies. For some reason, I thought you had control.
It does look like uh, the entire presentation is in it, so I'm very happy if you guys can just scroll through. Um, if it's easier, that'd be great. Um, but including uh, jumping into project narrative, um, describes what the part of the project is, which is a fine foods and provisions. Um, that's coming, hopefully coming to downtown Winchester, um, with a focus on French products and making it a um, a kind of small boutique style grocery store. Um, I'm definitely happy to read through the narrative, or in the interest of time, I can kind of move on to our other slides. What's the preference?
Um, board, how would you like to go on this?
I think we can just scroll through the visuals.
Sure. So following the next slide, it's the proposed scope of work um, with the existing floor plan. So just our proposed is to straighten out that front facade um, as indicated, and then opening the rear up a little bit more for just extra daylight. So that's the intention here. Um, the additional intention of the exterior front, like the front facade is to just maintain materiality, maintain the existing uh, street language. Um, and then just add a uh, new coat of paint and kind of freshen up that look. Um, so that's including the proposed floor plan. So what we're really um, hoping to do in the interior, um, which is retail bakery cafe and a cheese and charcuterie and wine. Um, locations and then added visuals to kind of look and feel, um, in case you guys were curious. And then following the next slide, it gives a comparison of the existing with the proposed um, changes. So again, materiality is intended to stay the same, same uh, storefront style, uh, just new paint, uh, new signage. Um, moving down, it's a little bit more of a um, detailed view, but circle, circle, scope of work. And then um, the proposed materiality noted as well. So it's an existing brick and stucco, I believe. Um, with paint, so just refreshing that. Um, and then moving down, um, that's just the proposed rear uh, renovation. Uh, removing one of the egress doors, it still maintains the, the required code egresses um, on the interior, but removing that door and adding some windows there. Um, and then we just wanted to include uh, more interior views of what we're hoping for the space to look like, just so you guys can um, have an awareness and hopefully get a little bit excited about it, too. Personally, very excited about the cheese, uh, cheese counter myself.
It's lovely.
Cheese lovers unite. Um, so um,
And then.
Very much, oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Uh, and then just the um, historic conservation and preservation note. The property itself is not listed as part of um, in historic, however, uh, just to note that we are just maintaining materials and matching and repainting. So that's our, our main approach here. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I butted in there. So one, one thing that um, we should note upfront is that when you do your, when we get to the final submission, one of the things that we, we do take a look at is how the um, how the storefront, as it faces the public and livens the public space. So um, we are, we're, we are very interested in what it looks like for the first six or so, or maybe ten feet into your project, into the building, so that it relates to the streetscape. Um, so that's, that's one of the things that um, um, we want to ensure that there's an engagement between the people outside and the, and what's going on inside. Um, so, but that's just something to come up on the, in the future when you submit. So why don't we go through the the requested, are there, first of all, I'm sorry, uh, anyone on the board have any questions at this point?
Looks good.
I, I had questions.
Go, go ahead, please.
So um, if you could go to the page that shows the um, the sign above the window, the blue there. So um, I was happy to hear you're gonna paint that metal facade there. Um, are these letters um, intended to be like sticking out from the surface of the facade?
Um, yes, uh, the intention is for it to be a um, kinda a, a three-dimensional sign. Um,
mm-hmm. Um, so one thing I saw, when you looked at this, um, you should, you know, previous sheet that had an image of it um, sort of in the context of what's there now. I think it's page eleven. Yes, there is. And I have to say that when I first saw this image, I felt like Nouvelle Maison Fine Provisionary Provisioner seemed very large relative to the merchant identification system of the rest of the block. Um, but in fact, when I went into street view and I looked down the side street, I realized that um, which is to say, look, I looked down Waterfield Road, the four stores that go down that street, they do have their signage above and on the big fascia. So so the only, the only thing I was confused about is how you could have letters printed on this mirror.
Well.
Yeah, it'll be a sign mounted to, to the corrugated steel.
And then, okay, that's helpful.
So, so are, are there, are there anything in particular concerning our discussion of the waivers? Because any of the design elements and such, we're actually gonna get back to when it comes before us as a, as a proper, as an, as when it passes our submission requirements.
So relative to the waiver, sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Just um, I know it's an exciting project, and we all wanna start designing from afar. Um, if not, why don't we um, so I don't know if it's possible to have the CBD rigs at this. I'm gonna, I have them both on my screen as well as the, the waiver requests, and maybe I'll just read them as we go through them. So um, if you could, so seven, three, let's see, the requested waiver is for an existing conditions plan. And existing conditions plan is a stamped, registered by a registered land surveyor, um, showing size and location of the surveyed property line boundaries and property ownership, division of the landed lots, easement curve locations, utility information. Um, and then it further goes into delineated wetlands, concom topography, a two-foot counter, counter levels, floodplain contour. So in the past, we have waived particular parts of this. Um, so um, just to start off the discussion, I think that we would certainly like to see the um, the land survey
Okay.
layout. Um, but I think that, you know, I, you can make an argument that we don't need to know about uh, wetlands, boundaries and floodplain contours, cuz I don't believe you're in a floodplain. I might be wrong. Um, but if you are, you would have to talk to the concom in any point, at any point.
Mm-hmm.
And you, Carrie, you are the, are, are, you are the most knowledgeable of us.
I don't, I don't think they are. I think because for water field, they only, it only touched a piece of the project, right? So they're, they're past Waterfield and up a hill, so I think they're fine, but I could be wrong. Um, um.
I, 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 I take your knowledge as.
Also, DM, remember that this is, this is just design review, not site review. Um, they aren't adding any impervious surface. They aren't changing any of the site. Um, so it's just, it, the only, the only change is uh, to the facade of the building.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
Yep.
So I think that we can, um, looking at all of these things, I think that um, we definitely want to show, so the next part that comes in seven, three, sixteen, three, after all this discussion of wetlands and floodplains, is um, the applicant shall also show unless waived by the SBGA with, after consultation with the town engineer, surrounding context from at least four hundred feet of the site, including property line boundaries, property ownerships, footprints of existing buildings and topography at two-foot contour intervals. Is that something that the board feels is, is an appropriate waiver for this?
My only question would be if um, Church Street has um, a, a slope that goes across the front of their property such that there might be some need to have the, the, to, to show that the sidewalk is higher or lower in any one area. And just make sure it meets with the, the, the entrance to the building, which of course it would, and that it drains. That's the only thing I.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you're not moving the front doorway at all, correct?
Correct. It is staying as existing, the double door.
Yeah, so um, I don't know that we would be requiring any sort of is that an action of, is there something actionable from that particular um?
Doesn't seem like it.
I think the only thing we need to think about is whether or not there's any, there's any relationship to Waterfield, but they're barely changing the back. Are you even rebuilding that staircase or just moving the, the, just closing up that door and replacing it?
Just closing up door and replacing the windows. I know that there is a development coming to the back lot. Um, and I know that I'm, I'm assuming there'd be some coordination following that when it's finalized, but right now we are not proposing anything. I think it's one of those things that later down the line, if it needs to be changed, then that's when the conversation is going to happen as far as we approached it. If it needs to happen earlier, let us know, but um, that's where we are at.
And just so that we have it in mind, is that, is that back door for staff or for patrons?
Staff.
Staff, okay.
Staff and emergency aggressive.
Great.
Okay, cuz currently, or I should say the previous business also used that as, as access for customers. And there has been, we've had, we've had discussions with um, the owner of the building about access to the back of those um, to all of the businesses.
Yeah, there's, there's parking in the back, and many of the customers uh, avail themselves of parking in the back to to go to the bakery that was there uh, before you guys. So that might be something you wanna take into consideration.
Parking will be gone, though.
Well. Well, yeah, still public parking though.
Yes, but if there's no, if there's no longer going to be access to the um cafe through the back door.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm suggesting is maybe they ought to think about that. But that's, uh, that's, it's, it's not our uh area, but it's certainly a fact on the ground as to how uh the pedestrian patterns were in the past.
So um, just to. Yeah, let's, let's just talk about the waiver, just to get us back on track.
So what are we looking to waive here?
I think we're looking to waive the um, oh, uh, Taylor, I believe you have it up, correct?
Yeah, it's right there.
You had it up at one point, you had our, our bylaws up.
Existing condition plan.
Yeah, so I think we're, we're actually looking at waiving everything um after the um delineated wetlands all the way down to the bottom. Um, and the only thing we ask is that it be uh one inch to forty feet. I don't think we need to know anything about the neighbors, cause you're not changing anything. So I think it's just, if you could, um, Taylor, if you could put your um, highlight the, starting at, um, go back up to about the fourth line.
Site development plan, we don't need that either. Building development.
No, no, we're not there yet, Nick. Um, go to the right where it says delineated wetlands. Yeah, so just block the entire rest of that paragraph and those are, that's the part where we'd be waving. So if the board would review that and make sure that that is acceptable. Any questions?
I have no questions.
No.
So I would, um, I would welcome a motion to waive the um section of seven, three, sixteen, nine dot three, um, beginning with the words delineated wetlands to the end of the paragraph. Um, with the um addition of the scale shall be one inch equals forty feet. If I could get a motion to that.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, why don't we have a roll call vote? Nick?
Hi.
Uh, Sally?
Hi.
Uh, Carrie?
Hi.
And I say I as well. Great. Let us now move on to the next item, which was um.
Site development plan.
Development, they're right in order, I think.
Yeah, site development plan. So the site development plan, uh, as we see here illustrates proposed buildings, parking facilities, roadways, driveways, easements, bike ways, walkways, et cetera. A two for carnival co- counter intervals. So I think what we might request is simply that things like uh, so there are no parking facilities on the lot. Um, you don't, do you have a driveway easement on there? I don't think so.
No.
No, so we don't have any driveways. Bike ways, walkways, you do have sidewalk in the front, which could probably, which could be part of your existing conditions plan. Um, you really have nothing here. Um. So. I would say that including the sidewalk onto your existing conditions plan would be sufficient. How does the rest of the board feel?
I think that's fine. The only question I would have is whether it's practical to, or there's enough room to propose um, a small amount of bike parking.
So that, so that would be something we, we could, we would ask them to consider, but in terms of the site development plan.
Correct. It's not.
Um, that would be something in their back, maybe, I guess, if you wanna put part, yeah, so why don't we um?
So we, so can we, uh, uh, i- i- are there any objections to waiving this at this point?
Yeah, I think, yeah, so if there, if we waive it completely, do we, as Sally pointed out, do we want them to consider putting in some sort of bike parking, which would be part of the site development plan? We could ask them to put that onto their um exist, you know, to fold that into the previous one.
It can be.
I agree with Sally.
I, I, I just put in here, there, th- there's no feasible way that bike parking can be included on this, on this.
That's right. I didn't know how wide the sidewalk is there.
How about in the back?
Bikes in the middle of the sidewalk.
How about in the back?
Yeah.
There's no access, you have to go upstairs.
Used tables out there for outdoor dining.
Okay, so.
Right. So in my, we can, we can waive sixteen point four completely.
Okay, is there a motion, is there a motion to waive seven, three, sixteen, four?
I do, I moved, I moved that.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, um. Nick?
Hi.
Uh, Sally?
Hi.
Uh, Carrie?
Hi.
And I'll say I as well. Okay, so that's waived. Partially waived from one above it. Uh, so now we're at um the uh building development plan. Um. I think, so this is describe the buildings in the square footage by total use, phasing of uses, parking facilities and parking space counts devoted to such uses. Any, I don't think there's anything.
I would move to waive this. There's nothing that, I mean, their plans show how the interior footage is being used and there are no parking facilities and parking space counts.
Okay, um, is there a second?
A second that.
Okay, so uh, let's do a vote on that. Nick?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
And I say I as well. Where are we at now? We're at uh phasing plan. Um, so a phasing plan is. So. Let's take a look at this. This is a, is this a multi-phase project or a single-phase project? I think.
Intention is single phase.
A single-phase project.
Okay.
Um. And you're going to have to negotiate, where are you gonna put your dumpster?
Uh, that is to be determined.
Uh, I think seven, we are gonna have two trash cans that will be on the back of the lot um in the loading dock by the side of the building.
Okay, so you will not be accessing it from, they won't be, you'll be coming in fro- through your existing easement from the back to pick it up. Okay.
Exactly.
Um, any other comments from the board?
No.
None.
Uh, do we have a motion to waive seven, three, sixteen, six phasing plan?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, Nick?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Uh, Sally?
Hi.
And I say I as well. Okay, next one, please. Um, we're looking at traffic circulation, parking, transportation, demand management. Uh, do we need to have a discussion on that?
I don't think so.
The only question I had about the circulation and Nick raised a good point when he said that you might wanna consider programmatically allowing um customer access from the back. And when I looked at the back um elevation, I noticed that right now the stairway splits in two directions and you're gonna be getting rid of one of those doors. Um, but you're gonna leave the, the brick massing of the staircase um as it is. And I actually think that's probably a good idea. Um, uh, it's, and it's expensive to take it out, so that I have no other question about that. Um. Um, as long as that's an, i- if, if people do park in the first floor of the new development, which is open public parking, that they can walk in that back way to, to buy three um products. I shouldn't call them, to buy provisions.
Um, so, so um, we are. Let's take a look at what it says, anticipates the traffic demand flows generated attracted by the project. Those locations alignments of drys drop off cur cuts, I think those are all going to be fixed. Identifying interfected imp- and so other than, uh, you know, um, asking you to think about allowing people to enter through the back of your building, I don't know that the traffic circulation, parking, transportation, demand management plan has anything that's appropriate to this project. Um, any, any, if, if the rest of the board feels that way, I would welcome a, a motion to waive seven through sixteen eight.
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Um, Sally?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
And I say I as well. Excellent. Okay, where are we at next? Uh, open space, I believe? Uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, so um, I think any, I would welcome a, a motion to waive a seven, three, sixteen, nine?
So moved. There is no open space.
Okay, uh, Carrie?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
I say I as well. Uh, where are we at now?
Utility.
Uh, utilities plan. Uh. So here, um, this is where we um defer to uh our town engineers um because they know more about this than we do, and we happen to have our assistant town engineer with us this evening, Brian Mantor. Brian, would you like to give us your, your input on whether we should waive seven, three, sixteen, eleven?
Yeah, based on the nature of this project, I feel that if you could, if the plan board decides to waive that um seven, three, sixteen, eleven, that should be fine.
Okay. Um, presumably you will, are you guys putting in new HVAC or anything like that?
Um, we, the intention is to work with the existing systems and see where we're at and if they need to be replaced to replace them. That's kind of silly and correct me if I'm wrong, but that is so far um what the discussions have been.
Yeah, our landlord already updated the HVAC between Liberty Street and us, so he's already done some work there and we're redoing all the ducts as well.
Okay, but you're, you're essentially gonna use the same footprint of the existing equipment that's under.
Same.
Okay, so with that understanding, and this is a question of, so is the board willing to accept that verbal um statement that they will be using the same footprint of the rooftop HVAC?
My only question is, um, if you're changing anything that we bought, that regards to water and electricity coming into the building or water and sewer going out of the building. Nothing.
No, there's no change to the demand, so it's kind of, it would be the similar program to what was existing. It's just reshaped and, and redone, but the, the demand would be similar.
Okay, and as long as engineering is satisfied that that works, then I'm fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, is there a motion to approve the waiver of seven through sixteen, eleven?
So moved.
And do we get a second on that, please?
Second.
Okay, uh, Sally?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Say I as well. Okay, where are we at? We gotta be coming to the, close to the end. Stormwater management, stormwater management. Um, let's, let's bring in uh our town engineer, assistant town engineer to tell us that we don't need it.
You guys don't need it.
Thank you. To the point, to the point. Uh, can I get a motion to approve waiver of seven, three, sixteen, twelve?
Before, can I just, I have a point I wanted to raise, Diab, is that, that's okay?
That's quite all right, yep.
Um, it's just, I happen to know that that particular frontage of Church Street, they had to redo the drainage on the intersection of Waterfield and Church, and there was some impact of drainage to the corner property, and I don't know if that was reflected back up the, the slight slope or not, but other than that, I mean, I leave that to engineering. If there's no flooding going in the building, it's fine.
Presume that there is no, well.
Yeah, our engineering does, under, departments understanding that the flooding that occurred that Sally's talking about is a, a few storefronts down from this location.
Okay, so as long as it's not impacting this area, this is great waiver.
Okay, so I think Nick, you, 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 you made the motion. Is there a second?
Second, second.
Okay, uh, Carrie?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
And I say I as well. Okay, where are we at now? Um, I think landscape plan, I think we could, uh, can we?
I move that we uh waived the landscaping plan.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so this is a motion to waive seven, three, sixteen, three. Uh, Sally?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Uh, Carrie?
Hi.
And I say I as well. And then one last one is we have a housing plan.
There's no housing. I moved that we waived the housing plan.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Hi.
Okay, so let's do a roll call vote. Sally?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Carrie?
Yep, I, I say I as well. Okay. So I believe that we are done with this section and the, the one, is that correct? Yep, so what we've done is we have partially waived seven, three, sixteen, three.
Mm hmm.
Um, and we have waived all the rest that you folks require. So I think you are, hopefully that's clear, you have clear direction on how to move forward with your packet.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Look forward to seeing it uh come in.
Yes. Us too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so um, oh dear, we're already, um, how did we get to be fifteen minutes off? Because that's the way we roll. It always takes longer. So we are now um going to move to the Rocky Ledge subdivision. So just to make it clear to the board, we're not gonna have a substantive discussion on this, because if we, if we choose to um move forward, we are going to need to have a public hearing to reopen or to discuss the reopening of the tripartite subdivision.
It's the wrong one, DM. This is Rocky Ledge, they're doing the, the lighting waiver. We don't need a public hearing for the lighting waiver.
We don't need to do the public hearing for the writing waiver. Okay, can you explain? So the waiver is not a change in the conditions?
It is a, as uh from Jay Talerman and it's my, it is a minor change, it does not need to be a um public hearing.
Okay, I stand corrected. Um, so.
Law in court, which we'll be hearing next, does need to be a public hearing.
So do we have um anyone here from Rocky Ledge who wants to present your request? If you, Taylor, you, you have control of the.
Yeah, anyone who wants to be able to, to speak or present, please raise your hand, I'll give you the ability to do so. Uh, Alec and Drew. You should be able to unmute yourself and introduce the project or introduce your, your waiver.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm Drew Blaine from RJ O'Connell. We are the civil engineers on the project. This project um was approved last spring for a three-lot subdivision, which includes the extension of Rocky Ledge Terrace with a cul-de-sac turnaround and three residential lots. We are for you tonight to request a waiver from the site lighting requirement in subdivision regulations. Um, we have myself, Marjorie O'Connell, Brian Tim from Marjorie O'Connell, Jim Connell from Paper Electric, Alec White and Steel DeVito from the project team. So this is the location of the subdivision that we are creating. It includes three residential lots and an extension of Rocky Ledge Terrace. And with that, I will hand it over to Jim Connell to present the photometrics and lighting plan. I'm not sure if he had access to unmute himself. So for background, we are presenting this lighting plan, which Jim went through and designed to show the minimum lighting requirement to meet regulations and, and to request from you all the um that we do not need lighting on site. And just to show the impacts of all the light poles on the site to the nearby neighborhood and surrounding properties.
So you, uh, yep, so to give everybody an understanding, uh, this is the site. So you uh, yep, so to give everybody an understanding, uh this is the site. Obviously, Rock Mahoney's Rocky Ledge is down here, baseball field's down here. This, all the way from Cambridge Street, all the way down is is a ledge, so you don't have direct access, vehicle access there. Um so this would be an overlay of the the new roadway with a little cul-de-sac at the end. With the three houses being built here. This is a picture from Mahoney's Rocky Ledge.
Jim, are you trying to share your screen? We we can't see it if you are.
You can't.
No, we're still looking at my screen, actually. I'll try stopping it, and then you can try again.
Okay.
While you're doing that, I should note that our fifth board member, Eching Scott, has has just joined us. Eching, you wanna say that you're here?
I don't know if she can yet.
Oh, well, please let Eching say.
Try now, Eching.
Thank you.
Think everyone can see my screen now.
Yep, you're all set.
So this, uh as mentioned earlier, this is the site right here where the three residence is gonna go. Uh these are the baseball fields down below with the Mahoney's Rocky Ledge uh right here. All the way from Cambridge Street down, this is uh, this is the the ledge. That doesn't have any vehicle access from here to here because it's uh gray gray difference. So that's the site. This right here is an overlay of the site uh with the roadway. With the proposed roadway. This is a picture from Mahoney's parking lot. Looking up, you can see approximately the lights that'll be up in that area. This is a picture from a little bit around the corner. Mahoney's is over here on the right. This is leading up into a couple baseball fields. Uh that's the property right there, the development right there. Uh this is just another picture, a little bit closer up of the property. So with that said. This is a uh a plan. Uh the pole lights right here. The utility pole that we will be, that we would connect to if we had to for the lights, is located right here. Right next to uh eleven wagon wheel road. Uh the pole lights, in order to be complying with IESNA, which is uh, it's an ANSI standard. It's a recommended practice, RP eight. Um would mean that we would put these poles on the site in order to. Light this roadway in accordance with the standard. Uh what we used was some more light poles to these right here. We used this hall of fame. Fixer in our calculations. These are very similar poles over here. And this is a lighting isometric, this shows the light levels on that roadway. You can see the uh basically the exit, the light right here. We did a slight rendering of the site, which is this right here. And followed with another rendering right here. So our position is, is that. Uh I'll go back to this right here. So our position is, is there, in order to light this roadway in accordance with a standard, this would be the lighting layout. These quantity of these lights almost um almost doubles the total quantity of lights. In the little area off of wagon wheel in Surrey Road, so um. In my opinion, I think would not be required to do uh this site lighting. Any questions?
So uh are we getting rid of all streetlights? All of them, or are we just reducing the number?
So um I would say get rid of all of them, it because if you're going to just. Randomly put a light in one location or the other, it really doesn't meet any standards. And uh as you may know, ANSI slash RP eight uh is a standard. So my recommendation would be to either meet the standard or you don't. So for instance, um all the streets in the local area. Um they really don't have any standard because they are lit by the utility company. And the utility company has a lot of latitude as to where they place poles. Just for instance, there is only about nine lights uh between wagon wheel and Surrey Road. Uh this eleven wagon wheel road residence right here already has a utility mounted light on the um. On this side of the property, right in between fifteen and eleven, and um. I think by putting this quantity of lights next to eleven la- eleven wagon wheel um may not be appropriate. So I would recommend you either do it all or do none of it.
So I'm I'm gonna push back just a bit against that, because um yes, you can either meet it. Or you don't meet it, but you cannot meet it in an infinite number of ways. And one of those ways is to actually match the illumination that exists in the in the surrounding neighborhood. So um I find it kind of. For my safety perspective, not having any lights there, um I think is, I find that a little odd. Um I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that. Um the other thing I should note is if we could go back to some of those pictures of the of the building from. Yeah, that one. So um. I'll be honest, in that I am really shocked at the level of denuding of the. Trees on this hill to the point where previously, I would have thought that the vegetation would actually have helped shade some of that. From the other views that you're showing. Um so, you know. In a way, you've created a situation where if you. Do put the standard lighting up, you are going to make it extremely visible from all the neighboring areas, because you've actually removed all the buffers. So I can't say.
That's that's not our lot line.
Yeah, so so I just wanna, yeah, I just wanna make a note that that this is a recent picture. In the wintertime, so there's really no vegetation down here. And then, as uh Steel pointed out, this is. This was, I don't believe they're doing.
No, and that's the location of the retaining wall uh for the cul-de-sac in the guardrail at the top. Uh you can see the edge of the retaining wall there, so. Uh we.
So, so all of the, all of the vegetation that seems to have been removed was done by. The other landowner, the neighbor. It does seem to be really bare compared to my memory of it.
So, Diab, what I understand is that the removal of trees in the three house lots plus the cul-de-sac land. Was um discussed by the planning board and. There was no saving of trees on this property except for a couple over towards the entrance where the cul-de-sac crosses the line. The property line into the site. Um and then I also understand that when, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, um uh Mr. Connell or. Um other representative, but um that that when you were doing tree clearing for the land. Mahoney's um asked you to do some other work all across the property line that was helpful to them for other reasons. Um and that is perhaps what we're seeing here, I don't know.
So if we were, if we were to go back up to the to the um overhead view, which shows the vegetation. Which was taken at some point, who knows when. Um. What you're saying is, so if I'm looking at that from the fields. Which is down essentially sub north, all of that vegetation was. Is either going to come back in the spring or it's been removed by the other, by the neighboring property owner?
Yeah, I I can speak to that. So technically, there's there's pavement, multi-layered pavement all the way up. So there were a very select number of trees that were removed at the Mahoney's request. That uh were actually inhibited in their building to grow down below.
Right.
Right, so there was cooperation with Tom, and then we also had received a letter from Tom Mahoney as well. And he was not in favor of of the lighting program that we had put forth. Um the lighting, if if, and I'm not sure who, if if everyone's familiar with the street, with the street corridor back here, but it's not a very well-lit neighborhood as it is. Bill in Surrey, and the light, e- even the illumination of the current lighting is, it's not ideal, unfortunately. I live, by the way, at seven wagon wheels, so I'm on the street, mate. I have, of course, a black dog as well, who, you know, is hard to see, so I'm very cognizant of it. Um but um yeah, the illumination as of right now is 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 not great. Um and then on top of it, we also don't have an understanding on where the actual. Driveways are gonna start in connection with the cul-de, with the azur cul-de-sac itself, is, you know, planned for three houses. Um so we haven't necessarily figured that out as of yet, in addition. Um but um hopefully that's just some helpful context, and we're happy to share the letter as well that we received from Tom Mahoney. Who wasn't in, who wasn't in favor of it.
No, we did see his letter, thank you.
Okay, so. So the lighting is not great, is that a good thing or a bad thing? I mean, do do we, what do we do?
So, I I I wanna, I wanna counter what Diab was saying, if it's okay. Diab, can I put my?
Yeah, you can just go right ahead.
Um I think that it is very appropriate to completely waive lighting requirement on this street. This street is at the top of a hill. That for a number of different reasons has had much of its tree cover removed. Any lights that we put there. Um in, if they were the worst lights possible, they would shine straight up into the sky and straight out across the. The treetops and then straight down into the landscape, and it's basically because it's a top of the hill location. Um it has the potential just to be this glaring. Glow ball in the middle of our west side, and I'm sure that we don't want that. I mean, it's kind of like putting a Home Depot lot up on a cliff and saying, let's put all the lights around it. Um we don't, I personally would think it would be horrible, and I agree with Tom Mahoney and with the applicant that. That we shouldn't, we should waive our cul-de-sac requirement for exterior lighting. Um especially considering that it's not long driveways and that the houses will be sighted, and they will have. Probably, you know, an entry lamp at the end of their driveway or whatever, but we don't need more light up there than will come. From the development of homes on those sites.
So there'll be, there'll be, likely there'll be uh lamps at the end of the walkways or driveways?
Very likely, and I and I have five kids, by the way, and they're eight years old, so certainly it's gonna be important that we have a well-lit area. Um and I intend to own to to build a home there at some point, so. Um but a- absolutely, we certainly intend to have lamps at the end of the driveways.
Any, any other comments from the planning board?
I agree with Sally's comments.
Thank you.
Okay, are we, are we ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we would, if I say this right, waive the requirement in our subdivision regulations for streetlights for. This subdivision. I'm not saying it properly in terms of the section of the code.
Yeah, why don't we pull in the section of the code so that we get it correct? Um Trevor, you wouldn't happen to have that handy, would you?
It is section seven point one three of the subdivision regulations.
Okay, let's, let's, let's pop that up on the screen, please, so that. Everyone can see that.
No, it's not seven one three, it's seven.
Seven point thirteen, sorry.
Oh, I see, seven thirteen. Right, it says the applicant should be responsible for the installation of all street lighting within the subdivision at locations determined by the board after consultation with the town engineer. In accordance with the selectmen's street lighting policy. Um I don't know anything about the select, selectmen's street lighting policy, so I don't know if there's something we should know about that before we waive this requirement.
So, yeah, so. We have not yet consulted with the town engineer or the DPW or the street lighting policy. So. I think we do have to do that, according to this.
So, uh.
So.
O'Connell, again, I've looked online to your documents, and I haven't found anything at least published about that.
I I I don't doubt that, um but I, it may be on some piece of vellum from the previous century, that's. So what I think we can do is we can, you know, the 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 planning board can move to um. Waive seven thirteen um on the condition that we work with, that we discuss this with these other parties. And determine if there are any concerns, if there are any concerns, they will be brought back to the planning board for further discussion. I think that's the best we can do at the moment. Um we just have to.
Well, I have to say that I have better luck searching. Um just using my browser than using the search utilities on our town website. And using my browser if I was to search on um selectmen's street lighting policy.
Right, but but the the the, what we need to do is not what that policy is, but we are supposed to speak with. Um. These other, you know, we can, if we want to, we can waive our own requirements to speak with them. Um but, you know, we don't, we don't have the, I mean, that's the key thing here, is that according to our subdivision regs. We need to consult with these two bodies.
Right, there is something in our town code um that has to do with outdoor lighting. Um and it's our town code, section five, general regulations.
Right, so.
This is actually, this is part of our zoning bylaw, not the town code, okay, I.
Right, so what what's, what's before us now is whether we want to. What do we want to do about the section, the part in seven thirteen, which directs us? Is there our own regulations which directs us to consult with town engineer DPW?
We should do that.
This discussion from the board.
Is there a way to um ask the town engineer present now? Ryan, if there, you you. You have any comments on this?
Um well, I think with respect to the Winchester standard street lighting. What was the select board guidelines, I think Diab may be right, that might be some. Old piece of paper that's in our archives, we could certainly look for and see if that's, provide some context or some guidance on this. Um but it's my understanding that the town engineer and the myself, the engineering departments, on a whole. Is that um that if, that the standards that Mr. Connell was discussing. Um like if you're going to design this, you should design to those standards. Or you shouldn't put lights in at all, especially giving some context with respect to the 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 general neighborhood. Um the amount of traffic that you see in that area, the number of pedestrians um that are gonna be low. Um and then the existing street, street lighting, as um Mr. DeVito, DeVito talked about is. Um it's not a robust lighting plan in that area, so not having lights in there seems to be in line or with the the um existing. Lighting plan for that neighborhood.
Let's, let's not forget that that, that whole area was a subdivision from who knows how many decades ago. Which may have actually existed prior to the towns, whatever this document is. Um we don't know which came first, the vellum or the parchment. Um so again, um how does the planning board feel about um? Handling this directive.
The applicants having their hand up, Diab, and whether we need to hear from them before we make any further deliberation.
Uh this is a pretty, I I at this point, I think it's, it's pretty much a administrative question. To the board as to how they wish to, I mean, the board seems to, you know, the consensus from the board is that they wish to. Move on without, to to remove this.
I I would be comfortable um waiving our consult with the two. Um. The 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 two entities that we're supposed to talk to and um. And then waive, waive the um necessary lighting.
Okay.
Here.
Um well, discussion from the rest of the board.
Yeah, I think we just need to state that we feel we have sufficient information to waive the. Lighting requirement.
Okay, Nick?
I don't know.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so um Sally?
I I would make a motion that um for the Rocky Ledge subdivision, um that section seven. Um, that section seven point one three, street lighting of our subdivision regulations. Um, be waived, including the planning board waiving its or or. I don't know, waiving its its um, right or obligation to consult with the town engineer and the department of public works. And to allow the applicant to continue with the development without the addition of streetlights.
Could I, could I make a request that we split that into two motions?
Sure. Okay, so the first motion is that the planning board would waive their right to consult with the town engineer. And the department of public works on the question of whether there should be streetlights at the top. Is that right?
Yeah, it would not be our, it's not our right, it's we are the directive in our. Um, by law in our subdivision regs to waive the requirement of seven point one three. That we consult with the. Town engineer and the department of public works.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, um, can we have any discussion on that? Okay, why don't we have a vote on that? Um, Carrie?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Yicheng?
Hi.
And I vote against that. So, um, that passes for one and then can we have a the 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 second motion, please? Which would be to um, waive. The requirements of seven thirteen, street lighting in terms of the installation of lights according to um.
According to seven thirteen.
According to the the selectmen's, select board's lighting policy. We need to change that language. It says selectmen.
Yeah, well, it doesn't, it'll refers to a document that no one knows how to find. Um, but I would move that for, which is what I started to do, to say, let's waive seven thirteen.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I think we we. Again, we've.
Seven thirteen that involves requiring them to install street lighting.
Right, so the language I would recommend for the motion is to um, waive the requirements under seven thirteen. That lighting be installed as per the selectmen's street lighting policy and ANSI street lighting guidelines.
So moved.
Is there a, okay, uh, roll call vote, please? Uh, Yicheng?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
Uh, Nick?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
And I say I as well. So thank you very much. I guess you guys are. It's a little, gonna be a little darker up there.
It's a good thing if you like to see the stars.
Well, you're in the wrong part of the country for that.
This is a site where there could be a very serious impact on Winchester's night sky, so I appreciate Mr. Mahoney's sentiment.
Thank you for your time.
Very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Um, so now let's move on to um, our next. Discussion and this is the discussion, correct me if I'm wrong, Taylor, where we are. Merely going to see whether the board is willing. To line up for a public hearing. On uh, opening, reopening the tripartite agreement for the Loring Street. Loring Court subdivision, we will not be having any substantive discussion of. Things because we need to do that at the public hearing where all of the neighbors have been noticed. Um, and that is going to be, can you remind us when that will be, Taylor?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, so.
Public hearings require two weeks' notice?
Yeah, there's been, they've had two weeks' notice. All the butters have been notified.
Oh, so notice has already been sent out.
Notice has been sent out, but the board has never discussed whether they wish to actually proceed. So um, we we did this in parallel to. Um, if if the board doesn't want to go ahead, we'll just cancel the public hearing. If the board wants to go ahead, then that's just fine, so. Um, do we have someone here from the proponents who can give us like a two minute overview of the? Of the issues that they are running into? Um, we're again, we're not going to go into great detail because that after we're gonna, we want to make sure that the public has time to comment. Um. The the neighborhood was very much involved in the um, Loring Court subdivision process. And we want to make sure they're involved as well. So please go ahead. Who is, who's going to speak with us this evening?
Yeah, Mr. Chair for the record and members of the board, um, attorney Joseph Tabby Ruben Redman. Five hundred Unicorn Park Drive in in Woburn. Uh, with me is Robert Murray, the principal of Lockwin LLC. And also Adam Marchianda, who is the site engineer. Um, for this development. So we've filed a request with the planning board. Um, seeking approval of an amended tripartite agreement. And the release of of lot one. Um, shown on the subdivision plan that was approved by the board on October thirteen, twenty twenty. Uh, with the decision um, issuing on November twenty third. That those requests are the subject of a public hearing scheduled for next week. Um, in connection with this um. Request, we've filed a easement plan of land that was required under the tripartite agreement. We have um, filed and executed utility easement agreement that was reviewed. And revised by town council. Um, we've provided draft copies of both the covenant, the property owners association with. Submitted revised as built plan. And was also submitted a proposed amendment to the tripartite agreement. For consideration by the planning board, um, along with the request to release lot one. Um. In terms of the amendment to the tripartite agreement. When we were discussing this with um. Former town council and Anderson and Greer back in twenty twenty two, he had language in the tripartite agreement that. Would allow the board, um, similar to what has been done with other subdivisions like Abbey Road. To um, release a lot um, at their discretion, um, subject to their satisfaction.
We had. Mr. Trevy, could I interrupt you for a brief second? I think I think the board is not really cognizant of a lot of these details. Can you give us like why, what has caused you to come before this board? To ask for these changes? Why, why do we need to do anything?
Okay, so. Loring Court, to those unfamiliar, it is an existing roadway in the town of Winchester. On the right side of it, a two longtime residence. Um, homes that have been there for many, many years. On the left side was the former Bodakian rug cleaning um. Company and warehouse. Mr. Murray uh, bought that property. Uh, demoed the um, commercial use and had a three lot subdivision approved. Lot one, we have under agreement. And have a sale pending, subject to the planning board considering the release of lot one. This would be the the house on the left side, that being lot one. So that's the reason for the specific request, Mr. Chair.
And and the reason that you cannot do it presently. Is that the tripartite agreement requires you to complete. Building on all three lots before you are given a certificate of occupancy. Is that a correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so what's before the board is, um, on this particular subdivision. Um, a. Let's call it, let's just call it a decision. Um, the board did not say that. The lots could be released one by one. Um, which is sometimes done, but that there was a certain money put in escrow in order to ensure that. Um, some of the um. Oh, what's the word? Brian, Brian, can you help me? Someone tell me what the wording is for why you put things in escrow. Um, the improvements, some of the improvements would be completed, but the monies that are in the escrow is only seventy five thousand. And that the idea was that the lots themselves would be essentially surety for the making to. To cover the cost of any of the improvements. Um, so. Brian, did I get that right?
My understanding that the seventy five thousand dollars is a bond, basically like a bond or. An amount of money to ensure that the the subdivision, like the right of way, the roadway aspects of the work is completed to to the to the approved standard. So things like. Making sure that the granite curbing is installed, that the final pavement is installed and was done correctly. Um, I don't remember the specifics, but there was like a list of items, like unit items that we could use. To um, complete as- aspects of the work if it wasn't done in to compliance or satisfactory to the town.
Well, that that was my question with regards to whether we go into a public hearing. I would want to know in a public hearing that that. Everything that they needed to do to make the subdivision ready for. A house to be built would be done before we would release a lot. And that would include everything that Brian Mantor was just saying. It's are are all the shared utilities. Are in place or all the shared sidewalk and roadway infrastructures and drainage inlets and so on in place. Um, and if that's the case, then I would think that would constitute um. Um, uh, completion and it would be helpful to have the section seven, excuse me, section four of the tripartite agreement on the screen. Um.
So so let me, yeah, let me. Let me, let me provide just a little more background and then we can discuss as to whether we want to move forward with the hearing. So one of the reasons that. This subdivision. Um. Agreement decision um, had this sort of a more onerous releasing of lots. Or getting a certificate of occupancy only when all work is complete. Is because we had a, there's been a long history in this town of subdivisions not being fully closed out. Or various bits and pieces not being completed. And so we were also coming off of what I believe we were coming off of what happened up on Abbey Road, which was a a very um. Long, onerous and difficult process. So the background is, I believe that that is why this particular. Um. Part of the agreement is there, so the board will have to. Make an assessment if they wish to move forward with the hearing as to whether um, the or what sort of um. Guarantees there are that the subdivision would be completed um, in a um, a an efficient and timely fashion. And what, how does the town ensure that that happens? The only thing that we have control over at this point is releasing the lots or granting of the COs, so those are the levers we have.
Yeah. Chair.
Yep.
Can I, can I make a further comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, so I think what's unique with this subdivision is there's already an existing Loring four. That people use for access to the two houses on the right side of the one. Mr. Murray has one house already built, ready to sell. With with file um, with engineering and has built plan showing compliance with the stormwater. Um. And I, and also in the proposed amendments to the tripartite agreement. We're not looking for any reduction of the surety. Which at seventy five thousand dollars is forecasted. Up through twenty twenty seven. And then we also have a language that says, no release of lot two of lot three shall be issued. Until all of the work has been completed. So um, I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of of those conditions.
As I said, I wanted to see the tripartite agreement and if you're quoting a subsequent agreement, we should have those two.
So so the the, so I I those would definitely be. So the question is, do we wish to pursue this discussion further? Um, I know there's someone in the audience, uh, I don't know who they are, Brianna Burns, who's had their their hand up. Um, does the, so letting, keeping us focused on whether we wish to. Go to a public hearing to discuss these issues. Um. Is what I would wish the board to to focus on now. Any of those issues about what are the, what are the revised tripartite agreements and all of those things we can discuss fully at the public hearing?
I would be in favor of a public hearing and the fact that it's already been posted and that it's on the planning board calendar. For Tuesday, March fifth, is that correct? Um, I would say I would be in favor of proceeding with that plan.
Okay, um. The rest of the board?
A seventy five thousand dollar bond and two lots that the town can. Retain, should they not complete it? Seems pretty sufficient, but I don't know what happened with Abbey Road, if that, if there was a. More onerous. Bond or.
It was just, it was a very different situation, but it caused us to do a lot of navel gazing. No, no, soul searching, not navel gazing, soul searching. But but again.
Yes.
Are are you?
Dollar seventy five thousand dollar bond, is that a similar? Hmm.
We we can bring up, we can try to bring up that information for you at the hearing. I don't have any of that, that's a long.
Wait, it seems like two lots and seventy five is a lot of assurance.
So the question is, are you, would you like to go ahead with the public?
I think I think that that's enough for me to go ahead with the public hearing.
Okay, um.
And D E B, do you mind if we find out what the person with their hand raised wants to say?
Uh, let's just go through the board first and then we can see them and and again, I want the board to just focus on a yes or no going forward with the public hearing. Um, because you may have opinions now, but it's at the public hearing where we get to get all the information and that's when we make our decision, so. Um, so next in line would be Nick.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't know that I have a a super firm grasp on what. What is happening, although I I think I would be okay with a public hearing to to learn more, but I think I need some guidance on. On exactly what what we're doing.
Okay, um, Carrie?
Yes, to the public hearing.
Okay, great. Um, I say yes as well, but let's, Brianna, are you actually trying to get our attention with your hand? You are, um, Taylor, could you, oh, and she has the ability to unmute. Go ahead.
I now do, yes. Apologies for the interruption. I just wanted to um, say that I'm here on behalf of the proposed buyer. Uh, who would obviously be for releasing the lot, so um, just wanted to make sure if there was any questions and I'm here, here as a proponent.
So you are, uh, could you, could you identify who you are? Are you, are you legal representative?
Yes, I'm Brianna Burns, attorney at McLean Middleton on behalf of the buyer.
Okay. Um, I think, I think we are okay. I don't know if there are any questions. We've, we've, we have a scheduled hearing and um. We will be coming in next week. We have um, proposed language. I don't know if it's been circulated or not. Um, we will have town council there to help us explain things. Better. Um, there is a limit to how much institutional memory we have on this project. I think I'm the only one left. Um, other than uh. The town manager who was sound engineer at the time, who actually has anything to do with that project on the town side, so we'll see what we can scrape up. Um, anyway, um, I think we're set on this one. So we'll see you all in a week.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Taylor, do you have the exact time for that public hearing so that people who are tuning in tonight know when they can join us?
No, seven, I think it's, I I believe it's seven thirty.
Okay, so it's, 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 it's after seven fifteen and before nine forty five next week. But it's this. It's on the agenda. Okay, well, thank you all very much. Uh, appreciate it. Let us jump on now to the next thing on our agenda, which are our ZBA petitions and maybe we can move through these hopefully somewhat quickly. Um, I think we are way out of, we're way off our schedule for our. Our agenda, but that's the way it usually is. Okay, so Taylor, you want to take us through these petitions?
Uh, we have two petitions tonight. We're first going to start with petition four zero zero eight two thirty one Ridge Street. Uh, the petitioners um, are the petitioners here with their hand raised or are you, okay, great. Um, the petition is a two thirty one ridge or seeking a site plan review under nine five one. The Winchester zoning bylaw to change the grade of more than five hundred square feet by more than six percent. Properties RDA and it's approximately twenty seven thousand seven hundred and seventy seven square feet. The proposed addition of a retaining wall to lessen the slope of land toward the abutters. Allowing more water to infiltrate into the ground. allowing more water to infiltrate infiltrate into the ground. The wall will connect to an already implemented wall, which were encroached closer to the property lines than the current wall does. This is located within the allowable setbacks. And the wall had already been partially constructed. Uh, the owners um were notified that they needed a permit and that is why they are here today.
Okay, um, so if you could dial up, there's a a nice diagram indicating. Yeah, so the reason why this comes in before this is a ZBA special permit. So we are an advisory board to that, and I think this really comes into a question of um whether there is um that's the cut and fill, I believe, which is what we're what what the reason for this is is there too much cut and fill going on here. So um do we have any numbers on how much what the cubic volume of the fill is on this? Anybody?
Not that not that I've noted. Uh, the petitioners, you're you're welcome to unmute and.
Um, we can we can look it up. We don't really know, and I apologize for not being more knowledgeable. Um, I'm Tara and this is my husband Jim. Um, we actually didn't realize that we needed like approval, so we are here basically asking and saying we're very sorry for not understanding the process. Um, the goal with doing this is our lot is incredibly sloped like right into Ridge Street. Um, and if you drive by our property, we already have like three or four large retaining walls that make our lot usable and accessible. Um, so you can see those like in the pictures. Um, so the point of building the sidewall was to give our kids a safe place to play because right now it's like the least safe, very large yard. Um, and we had checked with our neighbors that abut the property um and shared shared the plans with them. We just weren't aware that because of the change of grade um that we needed approval. Um, Jim's like looking. I know we have it.
What's his name? Oh, here we go.
Oh, Jim. I think we can tell you how much fill there is.
So so the two things I know is there is certainly a cut and fill question, and there's also a question of the height of the wall, which is it looks like it's above six feet. And if you include the railing on top of that, which I assume is at least a forty eight inch railing, you're talking about a total of ten feet above grade.
I think the wall is five feet was was the planned wall. The existing wall is four feet, but the five foot wall was made to.
He's he specifically kept the wall and we we had asked him initially to push the wall back and and try to increase the amount of overall space. And he kept it specifically below that six foot increment to avoid that particular problem.
Right, but the the so why don't we take a look at one of the cross sections of the wall? It's one of those in there. I think it's the next one if you scroll. Yeah, so if you can zoom in there. Um, if I look at the 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 finished grade, it certainly looks like between the um on the right, it sure looks like it's six and a half feet between the top finished grade and that ground.
Our our estimate is around forty cubic yards.
Okay, so you've got forty cubic yards. And can you explain the discrepancy between what your drawing appears to show as a six foot, six inch wall? And you're you're.
So we would have to like defer to Jay Alstead because he's the design person. Um, and it was our understanding that it was five feet, so I don't know if it was mislabeled or drawn. I'm I'm like a third grade teacher. I could teach you like spelling and math, but this really isn't my.
Right.
Area of expertise, so we're not really sure, unfortunately. Jay unfortunately is on a plane right now traveling, so um he's not able to be here tonight.
Okay, I mean, I I I've pretty much given you my pers- my my concerns. My concern is the large. Just because your lot has a significant grade, um, you know, in the past, we have um the town has rejected um proposals to regrade because it is a significant change to the natural slope. Um, and also my other concern here is again, it looks like you are erecting essentially a a ten foot barrier. Um, if you include the wall plus the required safety um wall on top of that. And we have in the past asked um people to redesign their walls in order to reduce the impact. Um, regardless of what your current neighbors think, the next neighbors may not be so happy with that. So I'm going to open it up to the rest of the board if they have any comments or questions on this.
Um, just one administrative thing, Taylor. I I just haven't been able to look at these drawings and I I just I'm having a hard time these couple of weeks figuring out where we could get the packet. But nevertheless, um, the uh the wall, um, I think I think what Dia has been referring to also, I I I I think that um you know, that the change in gray significantly alters the natural landscape and uh some some of the wildlife issues and um if you are, I I would I would I would say, you know, tiering it. I there are significant slopes in our town and many people have come across this problem. Um, I think, you know, the the very easy way is to just, you know, level everything off, but I think um I think the I I I would I would I would advocate for tiering it, so making tiers and and slowly grading it so that you have usable lots, but then you are respecting the landscape. Um.
Just so you know, we it is. So even though it is a significant change, not all of that.
Yes.
Not the entire area is that significant grade because it it's like sloped this way. So like half of that top space is still the same grade that it was before. Um.
It's it's a small percentage that's being changed six percent and then a small percentage that's being changed five and then four and then three and then two. And it's quite frankly in line with the preexisting walls that were there. Um, they line up exactly with the I think it's like a four and a half foot wall that we have on the front of our property.
It's just that.
Actually makes our it actually makes our property even as opposed to trying to go off and tier it and then which actually would, I mean, quite frankly, defeat the purpose of the project. We would have had to put another wall set of of walls up. We would not have actually quite frankly gained really the space necessary to go ahead and do any of the work we're looking to do. Um, and I and I know the intention of this, the the ordinance was to, you know, stop people from building structures and to stop people from, you know, creating buildable space out of not buildable space. And and we're really just trying to create an open space where we can play soccer. Um, and and I think that if you take a look at the um, there's a side, which I don't know if I'm I'm assuming Jay put it in there, but there's um another side, another picture where he did the side um wall alongside of the looking at it right now. It's like the fieldstone wall with the with the stairs and the railing. There should be. Yes, that one. That that should be more of an indication as to kind of how is 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 our is what are is the heights that we're looking at.
And just to answer, um, I know, like you just were talking about like um animals and landscape. The other large goal for us in this project was the previous owners had used the back corner of that lot as like a trash, the back corner of a lot as a trash dumping area. So they had dumped like concrete and metal pipes, um, glass. We found like knives and they dumped cat litter that had turned into like hard stone, um gravel. So a large like part of our goal in the project too was to actually clean up and be able to plant like some like healthier plants and things that would be better for the neighborhood and our yard as opposed to the trash that was.
And the intention, the intention with the front of the wall is to include sufficient planting so that way even if um, you know, the wall itself is not going to be a noticeable feature. Um, the feature that will be noticed would be, you know, bushes and plants and whatever other type of greenery and shrubbery is necessary to make sure that it blends into the natural surround.
Um, so point of order right now is uh we're at eight forty nine and we really need to get to MBTA three A. So if other planning board members have.
What are what are our options with this? So essentially the wall is the wall is built. We're looking at the built wall, right? Or no?
This is a drawing of it. The wall is almost a hundred percent built. We were told it was like
We have about.
We have about like twenty four hours left of construction. Um, so that that's what the site looks like currently.
So so our options, Carrie, are we could um we could endorse the plan and 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 signal to the ZBA that we are okay with the wall. We can we it's not our job to worry about if the ZBA determines that this that some change has to be made to it. We don't have to determine that they have to remove anything or redo it. We can simply say we find this an acceptable wall. We could say we do not find it acceptable wall. We could say that we don't want to discuss it. Um, so that's our options. I I do want to make one correction um to a statement earlier made. The the slope, the the change in slope argument was actually not um put in to reduce the amount of or to make sure things weren't built. It was specifically put in there to maintain natural grades for um landscaping and to keep the topography as close to the existing one as possible.
My apologies. I I was.
Yeah, no, yeah, I understand. It's uh I was I was on the I was on the board at the time we put that through and it's not obvious in the language. I just happen to know the discussions we had going into it. That's all. So that's the discussion before the board. Um, does that answer your question, Carrie?
I think yes. And the this picture that we're seeing now is the view from Ridge Road.
Correct.
And this is saying it's a foot higher than the one that was there before.
There was nothing there before. If you look on the other image, there's a an existing wall in the front of our property, which is about four feet. Um, so you can see it in those six images. It wraps around the entire front of the property. It has like varying heights, but where it connects with the other wall, it's about four feet tall. So the new wall was designed, it's five feet tall to be able to mesh with that existing four foot wall and also resolve the the grade issue on the side so that our kids had a a safe play area.
I I think we all understand like the need for, you know, backyard space for the kids. But as the planning board, we have to think sort of like, what does this do to the feel of the neighborhood? Are we now driving down Ridge Street? You know, are we opening up the question of whether all of the we're just going to end up driving down a row of high walls? That's sort of like what we're thinking about. And then how does it impact the the landscape of the neighborhood as a whole? So that's sort of what I think we're left to digest. Um. I I just I feel like I'm having trouble getting my head around the change here um visually.
Think if we go back to um the first, the overhead view with the drawing, it's that one right there. So what you're seeing is the original wall is you can see where it says existing fieldstone wall to be removed. That's sort of the dashed line.
Yeah.
And then um that old gray thing which goes all the way down is the new wall.
Okay.
And just to be clear too, that dash line is um on the other side of the dash line would be the road is Ridge Street.
Yeah.
No, no. Ridge Street is on the top, right?
Go to the site plan, um, Taylor, go up one.
This is the side of the.
Okay, so this is the side and your neighbor is looking at at it.
Nope, no.
The neighbor is on the.
The neighbor is on the right hand side.
Right?
Where it says like um right where like the mouse cursor is is where our neighbor is and then Ridge Street is in the front. So.
But then in your plan here, following this drawing here, then
That's.
This drawing is turned around.
Yes.
Just like turn a little sideways. Yeah.
Yeah, it's at a different angle than the than the sheet above. Um, if you were to zoom out just enough to fit both pictures, both sheets on your screen at once, you would see that the angle of the property line on the lower one is, you know, pointing more towards like eleven o'clock and the angle of the right property line on the upper one is pointing more towards noon, but that's the that's the only difference between the two drawings. Um, but the other the remarkable difference to me, it's not the only difference, is that in the upper drawing, the wall appears farther away from the lot line and in the lower drawing, it appears closer. And I don't know if that's a problem of scale or not. I don't think it is. Um, so that just to clarify, I don't know if that helped.
Yeah, yeah, it does. And just another point of order, it's we we really have very little time left for my.
Very little time.
To get to.
So I can I just say, I know that we have bylaws that are trying to prevent um terraforming um of and building of walls. Um, but I I I think that the walls that they're building um are not unattractive. They they seem to blend nicely with the neighborhood and especially since they're planning on planting in front of the wall because that will also um minimize its height. I do think it shouldn't be any more than the four feet that or five feet that you're proposing. I got confused about that, but I don't actually have a problem with this.
Okay, is there is there is the board willing to make a motion one way or the other? Does someone on the board want to make a motion?
Well, I agree with Carrie that it it sort of sets another precedent where how um the neighborhood becomes if we sort of okay this and a lot of folks will look at it and say, well, you okay that? So we can do it next. And it sort of just is a is is it sets the ball rolling on what um are a very hilly town um is going to be doing. So I I I am continuing with that too. And when you when you start doing that, um, it it really alters the landscape. So I I would make a motion for unfavorable action.
Okay, we have a motion for unfavorable action. And um, do you want to list some?
What what does that mean? Does that mean that that the wall would be?
No, it's just.
dismantled?
No, it means that that is our advice, that our opinion on this project to the ZBA is that we would find this wall unacceptable, but the ZBA would have to weigh the comments from all the other boards and come up if they feel a remedial action is is required.
Just if I could make raise a point, um, you know, it it's it's one thing to say that it sets a precedent, but you also have the opportunity to set a precedent to say that in certain circumstances where you're willing to take the necessary mitigation to make the the area continually beautiful and to continue to go ahead and make it an attractive space.
So I appreciate it, but I think we need the board is gonna is going to deliberate right now. Um, because we need to get be moved on this. So that we have a motion which is on the floor, which is for unfavorable action. And it's unfavorable action because um it sets a precedent. Um, do you want to and?
It's tall and I I do think that it was unfortunate that um uh enforcement wa- wasn't able to catch it before it was built.
Okay, um, do you want to comment on?
So that's 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 a hardship for the end user when they they were able to start a work that was, you know, in in writing supposedly not permitted.
We don't. Yeah, we I think the P is that we don't have all the information. Yes, we don't know why this happened, but it is unfortunate that it did. Um, are do you have anything? Do you want to say about the amount of cut and fill or the the stone height?
Yeah, well, the stone height is too tall. I mean.
Okay, the wall is too tall.
Certainly, the cut and fill portion should have triggered review. Um, the height should have triggered review.
Okay, so those are um deficiencies in the process.
Yeah.
Um, so what I have here is that this sets a precedent um that we're going to comment on. It's unfortunate that the triggers did not, that the process failed. Um, that the wall is too tall as it stands and that's it on the motion. Is that is that?
You're too much time, so right.
Oh, and too much cotton fell. Okay, um, is there a second for this motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, um, so do we need to have further discussion on this motion? In terms of what it means? Again, we are just an advisory board. Any further discussion? Okay, then let us have a vote on this. Um, Eicheng.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, Nick.
Hi.
Okay, uh, Sally.
We can't hear you, Sally.
My apologies, I, I said no.
No, okay, and I vote I. So this, um, again, um, just to, to the proponents, we are an advisory board, it's up to the ZBA to figure out. What to do with this hot potato. Um, and it is, I, I underst- um, I, I, I wish we could understand how this process, we arrived at this point. Um, that's certainly something for the ZBA to bring up with the building department, to understand better how you arrived at this stage in your project. Um, okay, um, so. That is it, now our next, um. Thank you for coming before us for this, um, our next one, can we move this to another night, Taylor? When is the ZBA meeting for the, for this one?
And we can move it to next week, it's entirely up to you.
I would really love if we could move it to next week. Uh, was the rest of the board okay with it?
What's that, Taylor?
I think you'd have to formalize that, wouldn't you?
Yeah, well, we can do that, I just want to know if anyone from the, either the proponent or concerned neighbors here with us this evening. For nine eighty seven, nine eighty nine Main Street. I am guessing that. Nobody is raising their hand, so, okay, so why don't we move this, um, let's take a vote to move this to next week? Um, because this is, this is not a hearing, so it's not, it's, this is just a.
Do you need a motion, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, okay, so, um, all in favor, Nick?
I.
Uh, Carrie.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
E Ching.
Hi.
And I say I as well, okay, now let's jump into MBTA, thank you, we have with us this evening. Michael Wang, form in place, uh, who, thank you very much for your patience, Michael. Next time we should try to. Move this up, huh? Um, so I'm going to, uh, I've been kind of out of the loop for a couple of weeks, so I'm gonna let Taylor, you wanna? I think for Michael's sake, why don't we start with the three, with the North Main Street review, is that, is that a good place to start, so?
Yeah, we're gonna start with um, first the tables, and then we're gonna go through the comments of North Main Street. Um, I'm going to share my screen and throw up the first table, um, and then I'm gonna excuse myself to go to the restroom real quick, and then I'll be right back. Hi, Michael, how you doing tonight?
I am okay, good to see you all.
Okay, it's better than bad, that's good. Um, I'm gonna put the use table on the screen, and then I will be right back.
Okay, so, um, tiny, tiny.
So, could I just frame this, Diab, that, that what we're looking at here is. Um, the SharePoint document that. Um, the planning board and our consultants and our council have access to. To put comments in the right hand column, using track changes in Microsoft Word. And, um, Michael had. Um, a comment a- about, I don't know why we're looking at the use tables when we wanted to be looking at the. The um dimensional tables, I thought, and maybe I'm wrong, but we just wait for him to come back.
Well, why don't we, since we have these tables in front of us, I think the question, why don't? Um, I, I unfortunately wasn't able to, to, to review the meeting where you went through this. In great detail, and I appreciate all the work you did on that, um, why don't we quickly go through and look at these, these comments? Um, so we have from Sally.
So my comments were just to call it an artisan, not artisanal, um, and I came up with a definition because we needed one. And my second comment was, um, again, a definition for a maker space, because there wasn't one in our bylaws.
Okay, so those definitions will be added to.
Well, as long as the planning board agrees with them.
Yeah, so why don't we take a look at, um, artisan studio premises used for the production and optional display and sale of arts and crafts. Made from materials, so this would be a, um. This would not involve a residential area, this is simply a commercial use, correct?
That, I believe that is correct.
Okay, um, any further comments from the board on that one?
And that we're saying that it would be allowed in all of the sub-districts of MU one.
Taylor, while you were gone, uh, Sally raised the question as to whether we should be moving to some of the dimensional stuff rather than the use table. To start off our discussion.
Uh, we'll be reviewing all of them at some point, so it's up to you. One you want to do first.
I think we should do the ones where Michael's expertise comes in most.
I agree.
Cause so I think we will, we will get to the use tables, but Michael, are there any, are any things about the use tables which, which scream out to you? As problematic, um, or is this something that we can deal with, um, sort of at a lower level?
Um, nothing screamed out at me, there, there has been some movement on some of the residential uses, I think, as the table has evolved. But um, like you said, two family is allowed in certain areas.
No, it's not allowed in certain areas.
Well, it is in the draft that I.
It, it's, it's allowed in.
It is right here.
Oh. Yeah. My understanding that, and help me out, planning board members, but my understanding was that. That w- we didn't want any single family homes added to North Main Street, and that. Um, according to this chart, we're saying that we didn't want two family homes only in E one and E two.
I think so, I think it's just, um, we were trying to encourage higher density in E one and E two.
Right, okay, so I guess I had.
I'm sorry.
E one and W one, yes, I'm sorry, I said it wrong too, um, so E, E two and three are the deeper sites on the east side. And W two, three and four are the shallower sites on the west side. And, um, I guess what we had said in our meeting on September twentieth was that these would be permitted in those, the two house, two family house would be. Permitted in those locations. And, and Michael, you were questioning, did we mean that, right?
Yeah, I just noticed that I have to change, that's all, I, if that's the consensus, that's fine.
Okay, um, so why don't, why don't we move, if that's, if that's the one that, that. It may not scream, but it calls out to you, let's move on to something where the screams might be more um vocal. Um, so.
Taylor, can you, um, make it bigger by chance? Can't see it.
I think you just have to go to full screen.
It's as big as it possibly can be on my screen.
Options drop down at the top of.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll figure it out, don't worry.
And if you click on hundred percent, it makes it really big and you can move it around. Do you see how that works?
Don't, don't, I'll figure it out, thank you.
So why don't we, um, why don't we move through the comments here? Um, and there's a, first comment is about FAR. And it looks like we do have FAR in now.
Well, it was in a different section, it's not in this table.
Well, it is on the table now.
Yeah, I put it in the table because we. Good place to talk about it.
Thank you.
So, one of, one of the, um, there, there are two issues that I see with FAR, one is. The number and the other is the definition, and we certainly have seen some, um. Inventive. Um, ways of calculating FAR which are allowed, but which did allow for some. Um, I think some neighbors concern, at least in one of the projects where it included um outdoor space. As part of the FAR. Um, so as, for instance, there were, there was a project where there was large rear balconies. Which were, um. Essentially above an open parking area, and that area was included as part of the FAR. And so they were able to build larger. So.
Wait a second, Diab, why would a developer want to include in FAR, they would, they would want the, that number to get slower?
I know, I think you said it backwards, Diab.
Whatever I said, yes, whatever I said, I know there was, there was, um. Yeah, so, so it was not included in the. Thank you, my, my, my COVID, my COVID rattled brain, can't think straight, so. Yeah.
Yeah, the neighbors wanted it included because the exterior porches. Um, are perceived as building mass. And so they believed that the exterior porch square footage should have been part of the FAR, is that what, yeah?
Thank you, yes, um.
We just have to say what the definition of FAR is, and decide if it does or does not include exterior space.
So let's, let's make a note to review the definition of FAR. So that's one thing that we can do, the other, the other is getting back to that, I think both, all of us. Think of FAR as saying something about the building mass, are we happy with the one point two five?
Um, what is existing right now for?
I think GBD is one, do we have existing, let me pull up existing.
An FAR of one, oh, I see, right, with setbacks, it means they could have a second story.
Or if they made the building smaller, the footprint smaller, they could go up, so it, it kind of, um.
Setbacks, that's, yeah, right.
So. A one point two five with extra affordable housing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, I think, so that's the question of whether we want it to be the same. In all of the areas, whether for instance in W two and three, where we have the narrower. Or the, the less, the shallower lots, whether we want to tweak it to be lower.
Can I make a comment on this?
Oh yeah, please, jump right in.
Um, because this relates to an email that was circulated earlier today, uh, about a concern about, you know, smaller lots versus larger lots. And um, I, I think the thing about FAR is it's proportional to the lot size, so, for example. Uh, I'm personally am comfortable with a one point five, because. If you have a three-story building, that's essentially resulting in fifty percent open space. So it doesn't matter what the size of the lot is, uh, the FAR is gonna control open space. Uh, based on the height that's allowed in the sub-district. So I don't think lot size in that instance is, is so much an issue, that's, that's my take on it.
So how would you, how would you phrase this, how would you, what would you change to?
I'm comfortable with the way it is, so.
Okay, but you just said a one point five would. Restrict your ability based on height, right, so?
Oh, oh, but I, I'm saying that that's a, that's a, that's a control, a purposeful control, I'm not saying it's restricting it adversely.
So is it, is it important that we look at the maximum height? Um, relative to the FAR, because a higher FAR. Makes necessary a hu- a larger height?
No, it doesn't make it necessary, but it means that if the bill, if, if, if someone is going to a higher height, it means that the footprint's gonna have to get smaller. And therefore the open space is gonna get larger. So, uh, I think that, that actually works, because when you have a taller building, then you need to have more open space and, and that. Because of the other constraints on site planning, it's gonna move the mass farther and farther away from the rear setbacks. Uh, and I think it, it don't, it just takes care of itself.
Right, typically, most people don't achieve the maximum FAR with all the setbacks.
Right.
And height restrictions anyway, so then you, if you have a higher FAR, it sort of. Makes it so that it, it pushes to sort of our optimal. Shape in, in some ways, if we had, you had the right setbacks and such. One thing that I do, I am worried about, not just, um, the exterior spaces counting. As FAR, or if we want to do that, but also, um, I think I noted in, somewhere else, but, um, if we count. Um, I'm sorry, covered parking as FAR, I think that then, um, incentivizes. Folks to have just surface parking, which I think is the worst use of space possible, so if we are able to say. Um, covered parking is not included in FAR somehow, um, I think that then, with that then, encourage people to actually. You know, included in the building, but be able to build more housing, is that, would you say that was the case, Michael?
I'd like to think about that, I guess.
So maybe then excluding covered parking as a count towards FAR, or at least a percentage of it, say.
But you would include covered porches?
Do you know, I think.
If we can focus on the parking first.
Okay.
Well, I think the key on. So. The concern I heard from the neighbors was that because it was not included. So covered parking was not included in the FAR, and what it was covered with was open air. Porches, so they were, they thought the building was too large, because it essentially. Didn't include underground parking underneath the porches.
What, but, but they, you're saying it also didn't include the square footage of the porches, and.
That is correct.
And, but, and, but to E Ching's point, if we. If we just, if we don't include covered parking, but we do include covered porches. It will make it less likely that someone can build. An hopefully massive building on top of covered parking.
Or not use, or not use a vertical space above parking, like this developer did, which is put porch on top, right? So like you're using vertical space, which what we want optimally on Main Street, um. And, and not just pure parking, just a whole lot full of single cars. So that then disincentivizes, if we, if we say covered porches are covered, you know, it, it just, it just seems like we, I, I would want to. Incentivize open space, that's true open space and not a parking lot, um, somehow, but then. I mean, A, reduce the parking, um, requirements. Um, and then B, perhaps not penalize developers for covering their parking, we're using the above ground space of a parking.
So I think, I think, um, so the key here is, I think that. The reason this building did this is because of the required amount of parking they needed to do, right? All, you know, parking drives building size. So with the reduction in the parking and maybe a, um, a, a, a closer look at rear setbacks. We could achieve the. We do, we don't want to incentivize parking, period, so.
And then maybe then encourage, de- discourage surface parking, like what we saw in Waterfield, right? There were like a lot of parking spots that could have been used as, as, as green space, right? Um, so then to help developers then build under housing. Um, rather than outside of, build parking outside of housing, I think. You know, not counting it as FAR, or counting only a percentage of it, a- on top of decreasing the number of unit parking necessarily. Would help it.
Yeah, so I mean, there, so the, the, the CBD, for instance, has an incentive, it gives you a height incentive. If you put the parking underneath the structure. And I think Waterfield, the original design for Waterfield didn't have any street park, any open. Parking, um, and that was, that was, I think it was. To be clear, that was driven by the, um, the town referendum, which. Revised that plan, so here, I think, um. If we give, if we say, put your parking under the building, you don't have to include it as part of the FAR. But we give them a minimum, we, we've, we've reduced the minimums, I mean, the suggestions from Z-Rac was a minimum of zero. And we could go to point seven five and move it down to zero. We have.
About this without you, and I think it, the consensus is around point five, because just politically, it was easier.
Right, but you could, you could do a, a, if, if you're thinking about an incentive to reduce parking. Then what could, what, you know, you could, you could raise the height from forty to forty five, I don't know if that buys you very much. Um, but that would allow you to. Get your FAR in a smaller amount of. Um, your spot. My brain isn't telling me the right words there.
Yeah, I wonder if this could be a definition throughout, that we change throughout, rather than. On, on, and this district, right? Of what an F A R might mean then.
Yeah, so I think there, there, what we're talking about are two things. One is. What an F A R is and whether, or whether it doesn't include parking, but that's a policy decision in the sense that if we want to drive, um. Drive development in a certain area, we want to. Reduce the F A, the impact on the neighbors by, by making the, moving the building maybe further away from the. Looking at the, 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 um. The back of the rear setback. Looking at if there's an incentive to reduce the parking. Yeah, this, they're combined, they're confused in my mind, sorry. But I think, I think we have to, we, we have to look at the definition and maybe. I think it would be useful to try to draw up some figures to. So it's, we can understand what exactly a one point two five looks like on some of these lots, just so we, so we get a feeling for what the massing might look like. And that's, that's an easy enough thing to do. It's just, it's just plain geometry, so. Are we ready to move on to the next set of comments?
I, I think yes.
I think so.
So let us move to, um. What's coming down?
What, what comes next is that I paced it in a comment that was in an email from Michael, and he said that the challenge with us taking. The maximum height for, um. Uh, eat. E two. Maximum height. Um. Of E two and, and, and W, oh, W one. Well, I thought, yeah, so W one and E two, we made a maximum height. If you included, um, a mixed-use component to your building at fifty-five feet. And Michael made the point, the calculation in his note here, that fifty-five feet might not offer enough corresponding height. For example, if you had one floor of commercial at sixteen feet, floor to floor, and then you had four floors. Um, the top floor being half the area, but the full height, you step back with a flat roof of residential at eleven feet. You say four times eleven is forty-four plus sixteen is sixty. And he's saying, could you do, um, a mixed-use? Building. And, um, in, in, under fifty-five feet and, um. I. Got an answer from some drawings that my husband had from, um, uh. Darien, Connecticut, um, mixed-use development. Um, and he showed me some drawings that show examples. Oh, I have to take it off blur. Hold on a second. Uh, video.
And we just, can we?
But what I want to say is that these drawings you go through and you can see, and I can show these to Michael. How you get to fifty feet with, um, this number of stories and so on and so on. And, and it, it can be done to build a multiple, a building. If you look at our table of maximum height to maximum stories. Um, four point five equates to sixty-five feet in E one. And in West one, four point five equates to fifty-five feet in W one. And the way that's achieved is with lower, uh, floor-to-floor heights.
It can, Sally, it's just that. It, it can be achieved, but I, it might not be giving the, the, you know, ideal flexibility to a developer. And my, my point simply was that in the E one here, which you see in the upper left-hand corner of the chart here. We had sixty-five feet, uh, for a four point five, a story building. And then for some reason, when you went to the W one, the four point five mixed-use building stories. All of a sudden is now fifty-five feet. That was simply my point is, I don't know why that sixty-five got changed to a fifty-five in the W one. But it's not that way in the E one. I just think it should be consistent, number one, but whatever.
I, I thought we changed it to fifty-five in both, but now, now it, it's sounding like maybe that wasn't, uh. The best.
So, yeah, I'd like to hear from everybody, Nick, about, and you too, about what we remember from our conversation, and we could go re- revisit the video. But the fact is, it's what we think now, too.
And I think the Z Rack had suggested that it was shorter. E one, we went to sixty-five because it doesn't back up to. Any residential or really, it backs up to like the.
Oh, and I note that it's fifty-five for both.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and we went to fifty.
That's what I remembered too, thank you. And, and then the question I had was. If E one and W one are part of. The overlay district where we have to achieve certain density of housing. Is that density calculation for compliance with three A? Impacted if we reduce both E one and W one within mixed-use scenario to fifty-five feet?
No, because it's mixed use. If, 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 if they want to do it under the overlay gives, the, the resident, all we care about is what they're allowed to do under. The overlay, which is pure residential, so.
You wouldn't even use the overlay to create a mixed-use building?
No, it's, it's, it's not part of mixed use.
Right.
The overlays are, are multifamily by right, so that's the R, it's the R, um, row, the R values.
Okay.
So I, I'm, I am a little concerned, and I don't know what the discussion was, is how we managed to get fifty-foot high. Things on W two and W three and W four for mixed use because. At least in the, some of the. Examples of existing projects where we were looking at, um, commercial with, um. Residential above, I thought we were looking at a maximum of like. Three and a half stories there. Were there really three stories plus of residential over commercial up in? W three and W two?
But, so again, do you have, if, if three, three stories, you know, or two and a half stories of residential above one story of commercial. And if, in a three and a half story mixed-use building. Could be, you know, three elevens plus sixteen, and that would be, you know. Getting up to forty-nine feet, so that's where I think the fifty came from.
No, it's, it's three elevens, really. I mean, you know, granted, we all love tall ceilings, but. It seems that, you know, if you're shooting for a nine and a half foot. Ceiling height, do you really need the extra two feet? Or? One and a half feet?
I'd say, I'd say ten sixes is the absolute shortest you would typically see, so.
I think that you, you, in, in smaller properties, you can have lower. Ceiling height, but you nevertheless need. The utility space between the lower, the ceiling below and the floor above. Um. And.
Okay, so difference between ten and a half and eleven is, is only over three stories is only a foot and a half. Okay. So this is where we would, um.
So I think the rationale for W two, three and four having a lower maximum height. Um. Than E. One and West one is because it was immediately a budding. A smaller scale residential neighborhood, and that was what we talked about.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to imagine how, you know, how we would manage. Um, the, the, the massing of something like this. Um, and so I'm just trying to picture what it would look like, and I know, I know there are. We, we talked about reducing the massing as we went north along those, the W side of the road, so, um. A five-foot drop, I, I don't, I don't have a good feel for. Um. How that, how that is, okay. Um, so do we, are we, are, have we come to any? If we look at the M U for E one. Um, Nick, I think you said that you recall that was dropped.
Yeah, I, uh. I thought that we had decided that it was fifty-five at the last meeting.
For E one?
For both, for.
Yes.
Both. And you think, you have, you have what we wrote down.
Yes, I have fifty-five for both.
Fifty-five, okay.
And the rationale for that was that in those two large Skilling's Road area, Skilling's and Lake in Maine. That we were willing to not, we didn't want to have a building that was sixty-five feet tall is what we were saying.
It seemed, it seemed pretty high to us.
Um, so also for E three, it was, I have in my notes for fifty-five, awesome.
So, so let me, because my, my, my hearing is going bad, so we're talking about changing the numeral six, which comes after five. To the numeral five. So we're dropping E one by ten feet from what's in here?
Yeah, which, I think it's just a typo, because we, we had, we had decided last week to make it, uh. Fifty-five, five.
So I'm, so E one is, is by far the deepest. And where we could put, so now I am.
But maybe, I don't know, I'm, 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 you know, listening to Michael, you know, maybe.
Yeah. I, yeah, I'm thinking that, you know, this is, this is the big lot, this is the, if we aggregate E one. We have a very deep lot, we can make it, it, the height can go up as you go to the back of the lot, because the only thing behind it are the fields. Or, um, I forget if it goes all the way to, uh. Parkview or not, but it seems that. That's where we can put sixty-five with the appropriate sort of, um, stepping back. So I think that. I would be not in favor of reducing it below sixty-five on E one.
I'm, I'm okay with that. Uh, yes, if we could do to the, some, some of that setback.
I'm okay with that, too.
Yeah.
So E one would stay at multi-use sixty-five?
E two is where we are gradually moving down.
Right, so it's, so.
Yeah.
A, a, anyone, we're giving some real good incentive. To build a multi-use structure.
Yep.
So E two fifty-five, in my notes, E three is also fifty-five.
Uh. Is that right? Uh, E three is fifty-five?
I think we've talked about how perhaps Frost Street sort of slopes up, and because the houses behind it. Are at a higher level already, that, that, the extra five feet wouldn't matter.
So E three actually extends. Up to, it goes up past nine fifty-five Main?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have my note teaching, but if you have it there, what we talked about, then that's what it was.
Okay.
E three is just below Cross Street at the top.
It's just below Cross Street, okay, so.
The anchor building and, and it's the, it's the multifamily housing that's behind. On, on the anchor building when you go down.
I thought, I thought E three started, it went, went from Swanton up.
No.
Okay, so we're not including that.
Top east corner of North Main.
Okay, so I'm, I'm obviously out of date, because I thought we had included the corner of Swanton and Main is one of our. Oh, that was for one of our overlay districts. That's, that's E two. That's E two.
Yep.
E two is part of the overlay?
No, no, I'm wrong. I'm sorry, ignore me.
E two used to be a village center of the district, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think that the, the rationale, if we're looking at the maximum height row and we're looking at the M U.
Okay.
These numbers, the rationale was to taper the height on the east side. So E one would be the highest, E two would be the middle, and then E three would be less.
No.
Is that wrong?
Yes, E one would be highest, E two and E three are equivalent.
Okay, so they would both be fifty-five?
Yes.
Yeah, because we already have, we have, we already have ten twenty-four Main Street up there, which is that underutilized in terms of height property, so.
Right, so that's, that's, that's totally fine with me and.
Yeah, so, so E three's back up to fifty-five. Um, does that assuage any of your concerns there, Michael? Or do you still wish to see that pushed up a bit?
I, I'm very comfortable with where E one has landed with sixty-five makes sense to me, uh, with the four point five. And so then I'm looking at the W one and seeing the fifty-five associated now with a four point five and I. The fifty-five and the E two and three is, is associated with just the four stories. So for consistency's sake, if you want to keep W one at fifty-five feet high, you might just call it four stories.
So either increase it to sixty-five or reduce it to four.
Yep.
And I, and I would say that what we did in. Okay, yes, no, we're just talking about W one right now. Thank you, sorry.
So W one, sort of the more fertile lots, right, or, uh, portions. I, I would, I would advocate for making it equivalent to E one. So rather than reducing it to four stories, it's, it's similar, sixty-five.
It is that south of Clark within, you know.
Right, and that was the part that we had said from a rationale point of view, that if there was any place that we would go. As high as. A, a nearby space, which happens to be North Core of C B D, that's at sixty-five. This is the only place that we could do it.
Yeah.
So I think it, I, in my mind, so the, the, the only real, the difference in my mind between W two and. Or W one and E one really is the depth of the lots are a little smaller. And there is a, there's a substantial grade behind W one as you go down towards Horn Pond, Brook.
It does not back up to residential, it backs up.
It does not, yeah, so I think the. I, I'm comfortable with going to sixty-five for W one. Um, again, I think it's a question of how we manage the impact on the street in terms of how we deal with. Um. Keeping the front sort of low and building towards the back, so I'm happy. And I think there's enough distance. You know, I am concerned about if you're walking along Horn Pond Brook Path, which I do. Quite a bit when I'm in town, that you're going to see these massive buildings, but there's, because there's already such a, a grade. Um, there, but I think we can handle that with good design, so I'm happy with W one and sixty-five. Uh, do we, do we wanna, do we want to go around on W one and look at the W, the M U and moving that from fifty-five to sixty-five?
I just want to see the map, uh, that we had. So W one, okay, yeah, that's, that's right in the heart of. Where we're hoping to have. A lot of activity. Um. It's, it's narrow.
It is narrow. So I think there's, you know, one of the questions, because of the grade. On those lots and the way you're going to measure height is from median grade to whatever point you take. Would be at the top of the roof or midpoint of the roof. The impact will be that you're not going to see as many stories from Main Street as you would from the back.
But also the shallowness of those lots.
Yeah.
Uh, is going to make it such that the F A R is not going to allow you very easily to get up to the four point five.
Yeah. So I think, I think changing. Making it, making it sixty-five with the four point five will. Will provide some room for interesting reuse of those properties.
Incentivizes aggregation.
Yeah.
Okay.
How about the rest of the board? Happy with sixty-five?
W one, a multi-use project would be maximum sixty-five feet and a maximum four and a half stories. Which matches E one.
What, what's, what's there now? Uh, it seems like there are.
Nothing, well, there.
Well, there's a, there's like a, there's like a three and a half story older building on the corner.
Funeral home, is that in W one?
It's the auto detailing, the bagels and brew, the karate, um.
Of the karate.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think W one includes the, the funeral home. It includes the, um, the condo or the, I think there are apartments there.
Oh, I.
Multi, yeah, so it's, it's that stretch. Um, up to Clark Street.
Which is, so, uh, is Michael saying that it's, it's too low at fifty-five?
I mean, a, a number of these parcels are also on Horn Pond Brook, so I'm sort of ruminating on whether we're going to be shadowing it. But they're going to run into wetland protection issue. I mean, W one's going to be tricky at the end there.
It will, so. I think there are, in, in, in my mind, there are enough other constraints. That whether we make the sixty-five or we reduce, we either. Keep it at fifty-five and reduce the, the height requirement down to four.
I, I think our chances of success are probably better if, that we. I I think our chances of success are probably better if we make it a little, I would, I I I think going down to four and reducing the height. Makes more sense for those parcels because I think they're going to be stretched for. Approval in some of them anyway, but that's. And uh again, I'm okay being wrong.
And and then to Carrie's point, if you if you keep W one. At fifty five feet and four stories and an FAR, this is a mixed use line of one point five. Um. I think that it will. Be more acceptable to people who are really struggling to understand this, number one, just doesn't seem so high. And I think Dab's point is very well taken that that the land that is the lots inside W one is way above. The land of the um bike path or not, it's not, but well, yeah, it's the Horn Pond Pass. Um, and so it would feel very tall if we did sixty five there, so it would be good to do fifty five. And then four point zero floors stories. And then keep it at one point five for FAR.
I I think I'm going the opposite route. I just came out from a focus group for the housing um production plan with some developers and real estate. Folks and is some of the points were that there aren't enough incentives to take those risks. And I think one of the points that we had about going on Main Street is to incentivize folks enough to take those risks and to start to. Apply for those permits and just to to make those developments and to actually let release whatever. You know, existing use they have right now to to put some money in there. So I would I would say because of all of the restrictions already we know are on those lots. That we would we would make it more and more um. Uh. Beneficial for folks to to start to want to pursue some kind of development.
Which is the argument for sixty five.
Correct, and four point five.
And four point five and the one point five to Dab's point is going to be a restricting factor anyway, or maybe it was Carrie's point.
Because there's. Restricting factors are ready, even beside all this, just going through all of our reviews and and such. That there there's just a real reluctance from development community to to try to even invest in building up here.
So but this MU fifty sixty five for W one for maximum building height would be a good thing. From the perspective of perspective, from the perspective of prospective developers.
Yeah, provide enough incentives.
Right.
Yeah, so so I've been I've been thinking about what I said about the the bike path behind there. And if you if you if you picture in your mind, it's only the first couple of properties. Which are close to the bike path because then you immediately run into a budding the DPW yard. Which is a long ways away from the, you know, there's a quite a bit of separation between um the bike path and the um. The properties on Main Street. So I think that the constraints. And also that also means that they would be far away from the wetland concerns. So I think moving it up to sixty five would allow. More flexibility in developing the properties which but the DPW yard. That the properties which are closer to the Horn Pond Brook. Will naturally be constrained through wetlands protection in the slope. So I think those are, in a sense, I'm most concerned about those in terms of their impact behind. But I think that there are. Uh, moving it to sixty five will not affect the development there, but it would allow more development up on the rest of W one. So. I think moving it up to sixty five in my mind works.
Again, these are the two sections I feel like we are most hoping for development. And so if we can. Make it more flexible. Here and then be able to taper it. Along the neighborhoods, that would be that would be helpful to the town.
And those are three A parcels as well, right? We're we're fine for units, no matter what we do with this W one section.
Well, so that was my question. If you look at this, the lower box that says DS, Dale Sally. Um, and it says I needed clarity on heights relative to floors. Um. And then if you just skim down a little bit, on my question at sixty feet, would we be at five floors? Um. Uh, it's moving, hold on. Um. I just lost my, oh, here it is. Um. And and at sixty five would be be would be be at five and a half floors and also don't our. Multifamily housing overlay district compliance calculations for E one and W one. Rely on sixty five feet. That's the question I wanted to get to. Sorry. And that was my.
So so that's that's a question as for the purely residential numbers. Again, it's not the the multi use, the multi use doesn't impact our three A calculations because they are multifamily by right. So anything we do to multi use doesn't affect three A.
Which means forty feet and two and a half stories. No, excuse me, W one forty five feet and three stories.
Yeah. Which to me is another, to me, this is another reason to go to the four. And a half at sixty five because you're trying to incentivize ground floor commercial here in this is, you know, at this point in the corridor, it's the extension of the CBD, it's. Within the half mile.
Shop and shop.
Yeah, it's in the half mile of the MBTA station. I think if there's anywhere you wanted, it's those two sub districts.
So so. Yeah, so why don't why don't we do a why don't we do a a a poll here so we can move on? Um, so so essentially, we're looking at changing the maximum height for multi use in W one to sixty five. And so um. Just anybody opposed to that? Okay, I guess it's it's changed to sixty five. So Taylor, if you would please make that edit.
So. I have a question about W two, three and four. Um. I seem to, oh, no, they're all the same going all the way across, right? All right, I guess my question is.
So we are we are consistent between. Everywhere. If it's forty, it's fifty, it's forty five, it's sixty five.
I want to make sure that your observations were addressed.
Yeah, no, I think this is this makes sense to me. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so.
With that page.
So let's go down to it looks like a minimum setback to other district is highlighted. Um, so we, oops, we.
Oh, yeah, that was me. That was my purple DS down there. Zero side setback. Only applies. If you're not abutting SCI or residential. So. Side setback. Oh, yeah, that was up. So that's a different, I don't know why that one's highlighted. My comment related to the one that was two lines up from it. The minimum side setback and I and you would never want a zero setback. If you're abutting a residential.
So we already have, so there is, so somewhere if you scroll to the bottom of that page, Taylor. I think that is addressed in. So we have a twenty foot minimum setback to any other district. So that's taken care of. And that's also consistent with the minimum rear setback, which is for most of these properties. Um.
The exact same. Oh, I see. So twenty no matter what is what you're saying.
Right, so the question. So the question that I have is that, for instance, on W two or sorry, W one. Um, the rear setback is to the DPW yard.
It's a good point.
Do we, at least for a large number of those properties, other than the one that's right on Clark Street? Which does abut a residential area, so we would get the minimum twenty feet. But certainly, I think one could. Ask whether we do need such a large setback. When you're butting up against the DPW yard.
So the way to say it would be that the W one minimum rear setback would be. Some number less than twenty, let's say. Ten fifteen, I don't know. Um, and if it was ten. Um, but you would have a asterisk or a footnote that says. Properties in W one that abut Clark. It would be twenty.
Well, Clark would be a residential district, so it's already going to be twenty because the minimum.
There's one property that is on the corner of Clark and Maine that you would be referring to when you said. A W one property that. Fronds on, well, it's the one that's on the corner.
The one on the corner, it has a it's it's rear, its side setback would be twenty feet. If you if it's front, if the. If the front of the property is actually on Clark, then it's a side setback, which would be twenty feet. At the front of the property is on Maine, then its rear setback would automatically be twenty feet.
I think Michael had some diagrams about set how setbacks apply with corner lots, Michael, that was in your um.
But it would it would the the minimum setback to another district would take precedence over anything. So you would get. Twenty feet to Clark, to the property, to the. The first building on Clark Street, which isn't on Main Street, you would. By this table have to have a twenty foot setback to that property.
Right.
It's the property south of that, which back up against the DPW.
Right.
Which is S, yeah, so you would want to say um. SCI, it's an SCI, correct? I believe the DPW yard is.
Way I worded it is one of those double triple negatives that Taylor knows I hate.
Right, so so why don't we, so what you would do is you would carve out an exclusion for um, say. I don't know if you how you carve it out just for the DPW use.
Yeah.
So what I would say is that we would have an a an asterisk in our chart. For W one. Down to minimum setback to other district and for W one. Um. Well, it minimum setback to SCI, I don't know. It just, it's a unique circumstance. It's hard to to.
This is three A though, right? Is this a Michael problem or is this an Emily problem?
This is a both of us problem because we're looking at multi use, right? We're looking at everything on there. So. So I think what we could say is simply say that. For W two. Setback to a residential zone.
W one.
I'm sorry, W one, a setback to a residential zone requires a setback of twenty feet to all other zones. Give it a zero setback. And so what that means is that. For the properties which are but the DPW yard, which I don't think is ever going to be turned into a park. That that would give us the ability to build. As close as we need to that line, although to be honest, it's a bit steep back there. Um, for the.
Zero at your risk.
Yeah, for the for the properties which are not backing up against the DPW, as Carrie noted. Those are going to be very close to. The wetlands boundary, so there's already protection there for those properties. So I think we're okay by simply saying for W one. If you abut a residential area, it's twenty feet, otherwise it's zero feet.
Right, I go with that. And that you summed it well.
Is there any? How does that work with the rest of the board?
Fine, since reasonable.
Yep.
Okay.
W one, yeah.
So that's twenty and above it, you set it to zero.
Mm hmm.
Okay, so we're good on that. That was a good discussion.
Yes, helpful.
It really doesn't want to change that too, does it? Or is it just, oh, because it's just a strikeout? Okay. Um, okay.
So 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 can we just do a game plan check here? Um. I I don't I don't remember how many pages are in this document, but I believe the two documents together. Are like forty eight pages and I know the comments aren't as dense on every one of those forty eight pages. But how is it that, so Taylor, were you able to identify the ones that are actual open questions? That because I I remember.
Let me see if I can find where I I a a vast majority of them warrant some sort of discussion. If if a planning board member. Wrote a comment, the majority of them, they 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 warrant discussion. The ones that haven't, I have I have resolved already. Go ahead, Michael.
I was just gonna say, I have two more talking points to this, but I if you if you want to move on to the three A, that that's totally your prerogative, but. I I think at some point we should have a discussion about the minimum percentage of open space. Uh, and then also, I think it'd be good to have a discussion about, I I'm just curious how you guys landed on the uh the parking ratios you landed on.
So so I'm I'm more than happy to continue talking, working our way through this.
I'm gonna I'm gonna have to hop pretty soon. Um, but I I think this is in good hands and I think you guys have a quorum uh when you guys have have to adjourn.
How does the rest of the board feel about um, say, let's handling minimum percent open space and parking? And calling it a night after that?
I would I would be okay with that.
Mm hmm.
Just because we have so much to get done.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, we're we're on a roll here. So let's look at minimum percent open area, not open space, but open area. So open area is the amount, if you look up, you see sky. It doesn't matter what's under your feet.
Well, it was because of what's in our section ten of our bylaws, which is um. Handily. My desk. But when you look at, and it's hard to find because open. Space is not alphabetically with the other ones. It's it's alphabetically within some sub alphabetization. I forget what it is. But there's.
Right.
Here it is, open area is.
So.
It it's a percentage of the lot, which is not occupied by a structure.
Yep, you stare up and you see sky. So this this.
No, but you could be on a parking lot and see strive, see sky.
That's also that is part of open area. The lot is not a structure.
Oh, I know, the other one is green space.
Yep.
Right.
And so the question, what what the minimum percent open area does is it restricts the floor. The footprint of your building.
So the terminology minimum open space is what's used in the CBD. Regulation.
And we have no definition of open space in our bylaws is my point. We have green space and we have open area.
So open space.
And of open space.
So it's possible that the the terminology open space was inappropriate for the, but I think the the. Yeah, so. If in our in our. Because they're. Well, we can. Right, so this is, you know, so the language, this is copied from our 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 table four dimensions, which talks about open area. So in terms of, so. Looking at this, there is, you know, how do you want your 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 lot to be occupied by structure versus impervious versus green? And so this open area says this is how much you can have occupied by structure. So it doesn't say that, you know, the other fifty percent. Or however much, so so.
Well, let's look at E one. Okay, so E one, you're saying that there can be ninety percent structure.
Yep.
And in E and in W one, you're saying it can be ninety percent structure. And then when you go to E two, which is where nine fifty five main is. You're saying it can be thirty percent structure. No, excuse me, seventy percent structure. It's the corollary, the inverse, right? And then you're saying all the way up to the Woburn Line, E three. You would have it be fifty percent structure there and in the Upper West Side, as I've discovered myself calling it.
Yeah, and I think I think it that that strikes me as bizarre as well because. Um. So let's look at what exists in E three. So we do have, you know, let's look at the buildings we're trying to put in E three. So we've got residential three stories. We've got multi use four stories. Um, again, the biggest lot up in E three is going to be ten twenty main, which is the underutilized huge park.
So you're saying that. Somebody had a comment, oh, yeah, here it is, Taylor Herman, these numbers seem large to me. Meaning that. Like a ten percent would be better.
Or thirty percent. Well, I also think ten percent is way too small. I just was saying for for E for E three fifty percent. For an area that should be higher density seemed seemed large. And to Michael's point, Michael has a really good. And to Michael's point, Michael has a really good, good point in here. You know, some of the, some of, some of these were taken from, from CBD, but we might, we, we might want to do that, we might not want to do that. Ten, ten is, is, is very small, to be fair.
Yeah.
But that's, and that's, and so that means that E one and W one are going to be really built out.
Yeah.
And, and do you think we should raise that, Michael, to like fifteen?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I mean, so the, 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 the tension here is between maximizing building. If you, if you're going to require more parking, then either you put the parking underneath or you put it outside. You put it outside, then you need more open area. Um, but yeah, I, I don't, I think ten percent, I would be happy, I think thirty percent is, is better as our lower bound. And I think E three for fifty percent, I would take it down, I would say thirty percent in all the E's. And, um, ten percent works, or then thirty percent in the W one, although I don't, I don't think that the, the thirty percent will affect development along W one. I mean, this comes back to, will it, will it, you know, it's a balance between, as Ziching points out, we want to incentivize some development. Um, so for, um, for E one, I think thirty percent, maybe E one could, yeah, because you want people to have something.
But the, the other thing to note here is that right, as of right now, we do have a max, max building footprint. So regardless of how much you have, you have to also consider the mass, the max building footprint. So that depends on, you know, parcel size, for example. I ha, I have noted that I, um, I don't know the necessity of max building footprint, but you do have to consider both of them if we are going to be.
Yeah, I don't think that we have max building footprint anywhere else in our zoning, and it was something that Michael suggested.
Uh, I didn't suggest that, but.
Oh.
He refuses to take responsibility.
That's okay, so I'm thinking, to Taylor's point, I think fifty is really high.
So, so let's, these are, so, so thank you for pointing that out, Taylor. Uh, Michael, is your recommendation perhaps that we remove max building footprint? Um, because that pairing it with min, min percent open area adds another knob, which might be hard to actually tweak.
Well, I did a series of diagrams, which you may remember me trying to, to present to the Z rec a while ago, that was looking at the relationship between FAR, open space and height. Um, so I wouldn't want to just sort of say right here, let's get rid of this whole category without thinking about all the ramifications through, so, um, um, sorry.
So maybe we can revisit this question and have those diagrams in front of us and at this late hour, not try to find them.
Well, I, I. Yeah, so I, I think, how do we, I, 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 I think having both minimum percent open area and maximum building footprint. And, I mean, the maximum building footprint pushes up against, we already have setbacks to handle that and FAR. So I think we're, we're, we're over. Sorry, the system has too many variables.
Regulating.
Yeah, no, there's a term when you have two, you have more variables and you have degrees, you have too many degrees of freedom to play with and you're not going to get a, a good result. I, I think it's, um, so I, I don't, I, I don't know that, I think getting rid of maximum building footprint, I think.
Well, I think it's trying to keep, I'm trying to think of like, it's, it's prevent, I mean, what parcels would it even apply to where you would have, where you'd be able to do sort of half of your lot is open space? You know, like nine fifty five main would be like one of these huge parcels, but we're, we don't expect it to change. And we're just trying to make sure we don't end up with, I mean, we have zero side setbacks for kind of the whole stretch of North Main. So we could end up with wall-to-wall building, arguably, right?
But you could still have wall-to-wall buildings and have a smaller footprint, because you would just not build to the back.
No, I know, but I think that's what we're trying to make sure we have, is we're trying, you know, we're like, oh, a little less of that. And it's trying to be like, well, let's not just make it like hospital building after hospital building. But I, 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 I agree with Michael, it's sort of like a lot, like if you just pull it out of the equation and we don't think through each sort of, you know, impact on each of the parcels, it could really destabilize somebody's understanding of it and just.
Yeah, just the twenty-five thousand square feet is a huge footprint.
Really is.
So it's not going to limit anyone, so like, F, you know, if somebody buys all the parcels and decides to like, do some, you know, like, i- if it's a, if it's a super high number, then it's kind of immaterial anyway. At least it limits somebody aggregating parcels and do, I don't know, some bizarre other world thing happens.
Yeah, because it's like, it's a, it's a hundred foot long by twenty-five foot deep, which is, that's my easiest way of, no, I did it wrong.
Size of that one story.
It's a thousand foot by twenty-five foot deep, so it's two hundred and fifty times hundred.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we're looking for height instead of sprawl.
Right, so for minimum area, I think it's the, it's the more precise, because it's, it's like FAR, it's like calculating your, uh, your lot already. And so if we had a smaller minimum open area, so like a ten percent, it does encourage a flat building. So if we increase it to thirty, it increases height fifty, maybe too much. So like, the fifties are all along residential areas, the W two, three, four, um. So you're encouraging height at the front, maybe, and then no, nothing in the back. Um, E one, W one, you know, yeah, ten percent is going to encourage just building, building, building. Whereas we want, we want some open space, so I, I'd say, I'd say, you know, play with those numbers instead of the maximum building footprint. Because when we were talking about this without you, Dia, and, and Michael, we, we just didn't even understand what that meant. That is, I, I don't think that, gi- given how much, um, a lot, town meeting has to come to terms with for this, I, I just don't think that that's, that's a factor that needs to be put in.
Yeah, and, and I would, you know, again, if I, if I try to do the math correctly, a two hundred and fifty foot by a hundred foot building is just insanely big. No one would ever reach that footprint, so there's really no point of putting it in here.
Do I hear a consensus that we would take out maximum building footprint? And that we would stay with the current minimum open area percentages?
No, I think we were.
I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm not willing to make that determination right now.
Okay.
Again, though, because we already talked about this and we, we thought to kick it down, kick the can down the, the road, but, I mean.
Well, so, so.
Mi- Michael, what's your recommendation on the percent open space? You, you had, I feel like you have things to say that we're not letting you say.
No, no, that's fine. I, I was just trying to sneak a peek while you guys were talking at, at some of the old test fits that I did and was remembering that on some of those large lots on the E one. I actually had two multifamily buildings on a, an aggregated parcel. So when you say maximum billing footprint, is that per building on the lot? So, um, so that, there's that aspect too. Um, and, and what I did do was, I, I did a se- a, a series of diagrams, as I mentioned, um, Carrie, that, that looked at, it's not just like a, a hundred by two hundred and fifty foot building, because if you're doing residential, you're really only dealing with a sixty-five foot wide dimension for residential building. So that, that's what determines the length to get to the, the, the building footprint that we're looking at. So I, I have diagrams that show, you know, different sized footprints that are based on a sixty-five foot wide um, width of a building. So, um, I'd like to re-review those and I can share them with you guys. And then I think, I think we can back into the open space from that, but my recollection is, you know, the, the FAR and the height are, are kind of, the open space becomes a, a non-factor, uh, at some point, so. I'd like to, I'd like to just review that.
Okay, I mean, I just.
And I want to add that the fifty percent seems high, and if we looked at the residential lots that immediately are behind W two, three and four, I don't think that we would find that it was fifty percent.
Well, I'm just, yeah, the other thing I wanted to point out, Sally, is that in the, in your current GBD two and three, um, you know, by law, for multifamily, it calls out, there's a footnote that says you have to have sixty percent uh, open space for multifamily residential building. So, so there's a happy medium there somewhere between the CBD and that, I would argue, and maybe it's thirty, uh, thirty-five, I don't know. I, I'd, I'd like to take one more look at that.
And isn't this CBD listed as ten to twenty percent open space? It, is it ten percent? I thought it was ten to twenty percent.
The CBD has some that are ten percent, some that are twenty percent.
Okay.
Yeah, but those are, I mean, that's because it is such a, a, a compact and dense area. I mean, I think you would, you would find, believe it or not, that there are plenty of residential in the neighborhoods behind W's two through what X, you would find fifty to sixty percent open area.
Good.
It's just.
You, you. Reality check that.
It's just a question, you know, the setbacks give you a lot more open area than you think. So when you look at, when you look at a lot plan, you say, my, that building takes up so much area and then you calculate and you put in all of it. I mean, I've got a fifty-seven hundred square foot lot, I can assure you that, that my house is much less than fifty percent of that area.
And then, Michael, you want to talk about parking?
Um, sure, yeah, um, just one, one last FAR comment. You know, just, I, I may have said this something like this before, but if you just like, think about a one FAR and if you have a three-story building on it, you've already got sixty-seven percent of open space, you have to have at least sixty-seven percent. So it, it, it becomes, it's surprising how it's not as impactful as you would think. But anyway, I'll, I'll circle back on that, um, as far as parking, oh, go ahead.
Wow.
I just want to say, that's an important point to make, Michael. And so I think that's part of how we explain this table, is that we need to be able to show how as you, as you change some of these parameters.
Yeah.
They just, they cannot be seen in isolation, they have to be seen. So we'll, we'll have to do a, 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 a job, we need some diagrams.
I would like to recommend, when we present this at town meeting, that we have, um, building forms and diagrams associated with different numbers. So that, um, because that no one's going to understand this.
I like the Lego approach, where we just have inflatable blocks that people blow up to whatever building volume they want and let's see what they are. But, um, okay, here we are, why don't we finish this off?
Yep.
Have we lost, have we lost Nick already?
Yep.
Okay, so let's, let's, here we are, so, Michael, you are, um, I have concerns.
Well, no, I mean, I just had seen some discussion, both from the Z rec and I think the planning board, uh, in some of the notes that, that I, I reviewed, that, that there was some interest in the zero, uh, as a minimum. Um, and then this last iteration of the draft here, I didn't see any zero there. And then, and there's one, and I, Taylor, we'd sort of had a back and forth about it, because the, the zeros were in the ones that were the farthest away from the MBTA station, so that was, it seemed a little, um, curious. But I was wondering how you guys landed on the CBD, um, criteria essentially for E one and W one. To start with those, um, we went, you guys were proposing the point seven five uh, for those two that are the south of Clark sub-districts. Um, was that out because in, in reaction to some concern that uh, there, if there were larger developments there, that they would be impactful to the neighborhoods? Or, or what was the reasoning for not going zero in that location?
My concern is, I mean, my first concern is cars on the street. I mean, I don't, I just don't think people are coming without cars. We have a commuter rail that goes to North Station, like I, people need cars.
I think also for the existing, um, zoning, it's two now. And going from two to zero is quite, uh, I think would be too shocking for voters.
That's what I remember.
Like point seven five, extending it from the CBD makes sense, and it's a nice compromise between the zero that Z rec recommended.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, I think, I think the, if we were to move to a zero, we would want to actually think about doing that in the CBD and then all the businesses would start yelling at us. Um, I think that I personally would love to see zero, but I think that politically, or I think we're still going to have an issue with point seven five, because I think, I think one of the, you know, this is a self-selecting thing. People will not live there if they can't put their cars there and have, you know, we've seen so many, there are active disputes amongst neighbors between those who li- who have, who live on, in condos with insufficient parking based upon traditional car usage and neighbors. And so the question is, how do we ensure that someone who's moving into a unit which has a lower required space, parking space ratio? How do we ensure that those people do not expect to be able to take in, you know, park their extra vehicle elsewhere? Um, so.
I suggested that we do, um, resident parking on the side streets.
Well, one other thing that's happening, and, 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 and there is a place on, um, I believe it's Washington Street, it's on, there's, there's a, there's a condo development, it's the one that kind of looks like, you know.
Tutors?
Tutor, the tutor style one, where they have insufficient, according to the residents, they have insufficient onsite parking and they are using the residential streets for parking. And they are running into issues where the people living in the houses on those side streets are, um, there's just a lot of friction there. Um, and I'm, I, I can't wait, I, I don't want to say anything which, you know, says one side's right and one side's wrong. I just know there's a lot of unhappiness in those neighborhoods. Um, so here on E one and W one, there are no residential side streets. So we don't have an issue with residences there, what we would have is whether they would park on Main Street. And there's parking allowed on Main Street, um, but it would impact parking for the businesses. So, um, that's where I see, I, nobody is going to be driving, no one who is living in E one is going to park their car on Clark Street and walk to E one. I just don't think that's going to happen. That would be the closest residential street would be Clark Street and, um.
Well, this is. Behind the DPW.
Behind the DPW.
Or like over, uh, yeah, it's not, it's not convenient, there's not an obvious parking solution. I mean, maybe someone will take a parcel and turn it into a parking garage, but.
Yeah, so I. So I don't have a problem with E one, I think the people who live at E one will naturally self-select to not having cars, because there's no place for them.
Michael, is this where people do shared parking concepts?
Well, in a mixed-use content, yes, um, but one thing I was just going to add was, one thing you often see, like, including in places like the South End, is residential parking on the street at night. Um, uh, by permit, and then during the day, it's, it's, it's different, uh, for, so businesses can be served. But, um, there's lots of ways to slice it, but, um.
Yeah, we don't have.
Leaves here.
We, we don't have control over that, that's a select board issue. So we would, we would not want to plan something based on getting the, having the select board make any parking, so.
So.
I think points.
Go ahead.
I, I think point seven five per unit will work on those lots, because I think again, pe- we, we want people who weren't going to use cars. And this is a way of making sure they don't use cars.
And again, it's just the minimum, and it, and the developer, it's going to be market-driven, as to what the developer is actually going to provide, right? He's not going to build something that doesn't have the demographic for, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we move to, um.
Seems okay.
If we move to E two and E three, I think E two is, um, I'm a little surprised, yeah. So, so why would we have W two, W and W two at point seven five, when it's essentially kitty corner from E two, is it? Oh, it's south of E two, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's more, um, closer to E, W one, E one. It's all south of Swanton.
Well, yes, it's south and north of Swan is the difference.
Okay, so, Michael, is your, what, is your concern merely because you, you saw the point seven five and thought it should be zero versus?
It's not so much a concern, Dia, but I just, it, it was a, it was a change from what I had last seen. And I just wanted to make sure, I wanted to understand the, the thinking, and I, I, I think it seems fine the way you guys are thinking about it, so.
Okay, and so, and as the board, the board seems to be okay with requiring only one. requiring only one per unit all the way up to the Blue Mountain line. North of Swanton, I should say.
A minimum of one. So that people can understand that it's not that developers will build one or point seven five.
Right.
I think there's a lot of education which needs to go into those units of that and um.
And we've dropped the maximum. That's too, just too confusing for people, I think.
Um, that's a little, yeah, that.
Yes, the, the, the less we have to wrap our heads around, the, the better we can explain it. Um. So putting the word minimum inside each block would actually reinforce the message.
Yeah, I mean, it does say so up on top, but um.
So it would say residential E one, minimum point seven five per unit, E two, minimum one per unit.
So let's, so one of the things looking at E two and E three for commercial, including restaurants. Um, so is that sufficient for an office building, one per one thousand square feet? Let's say that, you know, we're looking at E three, we're looking at the existing flat pancake of a billion ten twenty four Maine and we decide we want to put in, and I think you had one of your test fits, Michael, had a fairly like a thirty thousand square foot building. And that would, and you can fit a lot of people. And, but that would only give you thirty parking spaces, minimum for a commercial building, which seems.
Way, and it's way up the road. It's, it's not.
But, but again, it's minimum. So a developer who's building a restaurant could decide to build more because they.
Yeah, I'm not worried about restaurants. I'm worried about things like, you know, the, and office space.
Make sure that their office workers can get to their places. So I, I think that, you know, making it minimum is okay. I think that we heard from um uh owners of the lots there, we said that businesses could not start up because of the owner's parking requirement.
That's right.
Yeah. So.
By the way, I just want to mention, office space is not currently in the use table. If you would like it to be in the use table, we should add it.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Well, it's, when ten twenty four Maine has office space in it. Are we just gonna say? Are we gonna say that that's no longer part of it? I think we need to have office space.
We should be deliberate about saying it's okay.
Oversight, but.
How can we have missed that? Okay, well, thank you for pointing that out, Herman. Could you, Herman, sorry, Taylor. Your name is backwards on the screen. Um, can you, um, can you scroll up to the, to the use table and type in big red letters somewhere, um, office?
Yeah, I, I, I have a call out for it already, so.
Okay, thank you.
Somewhere, yeah. Uh, I don't know where it is.
Okay, good, so.
Yeah, office and lounge space has not been included. Should it be?
And the answer is yes. Remove that question. Say, yes, it should be. Um, okay, so are, we're okay with the um parking? I think that brings us to the end of our time this evening, if not to the end of our discussion.
Right.
So Taylor, this is a living document. We need to get some version of this out so people can see it. So can we generate some, clean, you know, make the, make the um changes we've discussed tonight and maybe remove the comments which no longer apply? And can you just turn this into a PDF? Um, so that it, it's easily accessible to everyone in the public and just splat it up on our website?
Yep, absolutely. A lot of other people have view only access to this as of right now, too, so. Committees and, yep, I, I understand. I'll make the, I'll make the changes.
Those of us in the stone age who still like static documents.
So I, I do.
Good.
Good. So I, I do just want to remind everyone and, and Michael, I don't, I don't think if the board is okay with, I think Michael can, can go to bed now.
Thank you.
Good night, Michael.
Thank you so much.
I have a couple extra links for us.
Okay, thank you.
Um. So I do just want to remind everyone on the board that as scheduled right now, we only have two more board meetings before this is due. So when we look through, through the documents, um, you know, we have a lot to, to review. So I want to know from you all how, how I can best continue to work on this and make, and make progress. There's a lot of things to be confirmed. Um, some of the large ones, I mean, some of the really large ones, I'll just kind of splur- splurt them out are, who is the special plan, uh, this, the S P G A? Um, yeah, North Maine. Who is that? We haven't had that, that, that conversation yet. Um, design review guidelines or the, the design review process. Uh, the, the design guidelines, I think they're pretty good on development standards. Um. But there's, there's a lot to, to consider. So, so one, because I know that we're all tight on time, one thing I want to suggest, and you let me know what it's, what it, what you think. What if we tackle one item at a time? Instead of coming into a meeting like this and then just kind of scouring it for, for comments, what if we just take one section? For example, we can start with background. And just make sure that we're all comfortable with the background, but we have really tight timeframes to complete it as a group. Uh, two days, for example, three days. Um.
So you send.
How does that sound?
Sign off on them?
Yeah.
Yeah, so as soon as we all sign off, send us the next one.
Yeah.
So, so.
Journey for us.
Well, well, let me, let me, let me, let me try to understand a little bit more of how this would work. So um, tonight is the twenty seventh. We have a meeting on the fifth and the twelfth. Those are the two meetings that we have left. Um, we have to deliberate upon all of these in public. So if we are to go into this sort of signing off on areas, I think we need to do that at a public meeting.
But can't we debate them as we have been where he releases them, that we all read them off, we say no sing, you know, or we finish our comments and then in public, maybe Taylor kind of either kind of guides that meeting and just says what the major changes were and we all vote on it and we move on. So I think we could vet them sort of section by section.
I, I agree too. I was just trying to understand, Taylor, is that the process you were thinking of?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we, and, and instead of me giving you an entire document of forty eight pages, I give you two pages at once. We all go through that one by one. And then at each upcoming planning board meeting, we then review it in, in, in public.
So, um, unfortunately, that means that we only have time to talk about four pages. Because we have two meetings coming up and if we get two pages.
So, so there would be multiple, there'd be multiple versions of it. So in the next seven days, let's say we can get through three, three topics. I don't know if that will be possible, but maybe we can get through.
We have to do.
Background.
We have to do North Maine and we have to do three A.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm just.
My, my timeline was that on the twelfth of March, the planning board would meet and vote to um, that this is what we want to put in the warrant. And therefore it's what we're going to present at the public hearing on the fourteenth. And so the planning board meeting on March twelfth is to approve all the language. So it, it seems to me like I put a lot of comments in here that were like every time you say G B D one or G B D, or G B D two or three, please change it to this. A lot of those comments can go away if we can just jump in and make those edits. Same thing with M U one or with um there, there were some other things that would get rid of a lot of the comments right there.
Right, so I'm still, I'm still a little um concerned about the process here, so. What, what we're talking about is a, Taylor is giving us, let's say he chops it up into twenty pieces. The board will be given each piece and after a couple of days will submit written comments to Taylor on those pieces. Taylor will aggregate those, fix any Scrivener's errors, which I think is what you're really talking about there, um Sally. Those things are all Scrivener's errors. Fix the Scrivener's errors and the policy decisions would be aggregated for discussion at a future planning board meeting. So when we get to the next planning board meeting next week, we would have, let's say, twenty pages worth of already discussed and aggregated content, which we would then have to go through at the planning board meeting, discuss and approve. Am I getting this correct?
And if there's forty eight pages and we have one planning board meeting on the twenty seventh, no, that's tonight. How, how we get, we have to do them all.
Well, let's just focus on Ta- Taylor, is that the process?
You, you, you are correct. That is, that is my theory. That is the idea that I'm throwing out.
I don't think you can say that two days, diff- two days um lag would work. It's gotta be like the next day by five o'clock.
Yeah, I mean hypothetically, we've all read this over and made comments, right? So we're just sort of digesting them and making sure they're refined, like we're not, it's not like he's gonna write a new forty pages and show it to us for the first time.
Right, this is true, yes.
So I would, I would suggest that, you know, so I, I think this is a good idea. I do believe that the cadence of meeting it once a week. We might have to up that as we get, we'll, we'll have to see. Um, but we are looking, I think what would be very useful is to understand how much more of this we do have to discuss in depth. If it's merely signing off on things, um, we don't have to do that tonight. Um. So let's, I mean, I, I think it's a good plan. I think it's the only plan we've got unless we plan on having multiple in person. Not multiple board meetings between now and the, and the fifteenth.
And how do we, when we get feedback from council, knowing that Jay is looking at the North Main Street and that Liz is looking at the three A. Um, and that Emily Innes is looking at the three A. Um, how do we incorporate those edits into this timeline of having a planning board meeting on the fifth and a planning board meeting on the twelfth?
So I think that the question will be what their comments are. If they are substantive relative to policy, then those are things the board will have to review. But if they are simply, if there are other things, if they're administrative, if there's something like that, then I think we can just leave it up to Taylor to incorporate them. So for instance, this whole thing about how we're gonna do special permit review, I see X two point one. I'd say, let's suck in section nine point whatever and use that. And, you know, we've already got a system for special permit. If there's something that legal thinks we need to change be, then, then, and it's a policy issue. I don't think any of us, you know, I think that's, that would be my opinion.
I, I think you're right about sucking in other sections and we do that throughout here so we can emphasize it.
Yeah, we're not.
Actually going through the whole structure of the outline to make sure that it made sense as it went down through the outlining format and I'll share that with you.
So, uh, you know, I think we just have to roll with what we get at the moment and make sure that our our communications with legal is robust and frequent.
Right.
So.
And when we get to the public information session on the seventh, one of the things that will be really great is to have graphics, like slides, like PowerPoint slides that explain when you see this chart, this is what we're talking about. Um, visuals, either by footprint, you know, like diagrams of lots or by renderings of building forms.
So, so what I might recommend to the board is if they are, is, is to send all of your ideas on that to Taylor so he can aggregate them. Um, just because I think at ten thirty at night, none of us is going to remember. Um, but we do have to start thinking about what, what's gonna happen at our next public information session. So please, everyone, think about that. And um, you know, if you have ideas about graphics or workflow or presentation or anything like that, send them to Taylor and um we will reach out to you and ask you to produce some of those slides if you recommend them. So, I'm just joking, but anyway, um, I think I'm, I'm definitely toast. So um, if everyone else on board, on the board is willing to um adjourn.
I know that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, so let's do a roll call vote each one.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
Ken, no, not Ken, Carrie, sorry, my eyesight's going, Carrie. Um, and I say I as well. Thank you, everyone who is stuck with us. Yes, thanks to our recording secretary, Nancy Polkari, with being with us late into the evening. Thanks to Richard Leaf, our liaison for the Chamber of Commerce. Thanks as always to Wind Cam, they don't take you for granted. Thanks to our viewers out in TV land and in a DVR TV land. Um, thanks to everyone who joined us this evening, Assistant Town Engineer, Brian Manter. Thank you, Taylor Herman, Tom Lander. Good night, everyone. We will see you in a week.
Good night.